Thank you. If we can call the meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:10. If you'll please rise for the political relations.
I'm doing it. I mean, United States. And we should probably what we can say is one nation under God. This is all. This is fun.
Thank you.
Dr. Willet, do we have any comments?
We do. So as usual, you know, you've noticed that the this room adorned with the awesome artwork of our students. And today we actually have artwork from Tallad Middle School. We have a lot of Tallad Middle School teachers here too. Right. Listen, and so I just want to highlight the individuals who had put the art up here and kind of give them a moment in in the light. So there each of these has a name. And if I called one Pangorino and one Altar of Burkhole, you're not going to know which one I'm talking about anyway. So I'm just going to go through the students who contributed. But if you get a chance into the public, please come on up and take a look. So Silin Sang, and I'll just name the artists and just to, you know, congratulations to all of our artists. Silin Sang, Gianna Colombo, Wesley Stanford, Jackson Palmer, Ariana Dungare, Emma Chue, Donald Vanilla, Zachary Parker, Henry Durham, Julia Prulin, Calvin Avery, and Truman Harold. Thank you very much to our young artists. And I almost said clay animal is a name. That's why I had to read it in my answer. Make sure getting the name right and not the creation. But congratulations to our students who are being honored in this way. And thank you very much for providing your your artwork.
Well. And thank you, Dr. Willet. Now, as we move on to the next addition to the agenda, we'll just one note, you will notice that the agenda has been shuffled around a little bit from previous years. That is my attempt, sitting with Dr. Willet, to try to streamline things again, to try to get more more work in the short amount of time that we, Lord women, don't have to go past 10 minutes. That being said, I think we need to make our first change.
I'd like to make a motion to move L1, the Shipman and Goodwin presentation up in the agenda.
After H.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Then is Rini is online. All right, let's go with the roll call then. Jaden. Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Dana. Rini.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. So, Dr. Willet, the interest of getting attorney Ritter. We'll start here in a reasonable hour. We will move L1 again up to right after H. Okay. All right. So approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the December 20th. Minutes, so.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jaden. Brian.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Rini.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. So minutes passed. Dr. Willet, are you ready with the timer? So, public participation. The members of the Tallad Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place inside of the meeting set. That said, if you would are online and would like to speak, please raise your hand. People who'd like to speak, and we will call upon you. One last chance. What I told you, the timer is intimidating.
It is, and it makes a noise too, after two minutes, so.
And then we don't hear. That's even more. So unfortunate. Moving on. Phil, for strong support, nothing to report. All right. Then moving on to G, points of information. If anybody from the board or Dr. Willet would like to speak, please raise your hand. Right. H, student representatives report. Ladies, we are flying through this much too fast, and I hope.
So, prom committee has started, and our theme is going to be Golden Garden. And it will be held at the Aqua Turf on May 3rd. We have finals on the 22nd and 23rd, unfortunately. So students are starting to get prepared for that, and they're starting to get some study guides and help from their teachers.
And with that, we have midsemester day on the 24th, as well as the middle school having a day off that Friday.
Going back to finals, we also have NHS tutoring during every lunch wave this and next week, during Eagle Block tomorrow, and after school next Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. So kind of short this week. Any questions?
Well, and this earlier this week, I got to participate as a judge in the Shark Tank at the high school. My goodness, was that a lot. I had so much fun that we're going to do it in my program. So another shout out to another Mrs. Bridge class, which I know you both know. Great, great, great two hours at the high school.
Did you invest?
I did. Two companies. Oh, gosh. Drill Bib and and Tutorate. Those are the two companies, Drill Bib and Tutorate. So great ideas, great concepts, even better presentations. I mean, it was a lot of fun. So just wanted to.
Yeah. Shark Tank is like probably the best thing we do at the school. It's really great. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. As always, welcome to stay and encourage to stay if you need to go for studying or those kind of things.
We're right here. We're staying.
See where they are.
Right. Way to an after this. Dr. Willet, then, L1, let's move up to short do.
As you know, we've we've had a couple of bumps here now with respect to just getting all of our ducks in a row. Illness and all of that has prevented it. But we are honored tonight to have our attorney board's attorney, Jessica Ritter, here to do a BOE presentation and Q and A. BOE roles, responsibilities, and then to answer any questions you have that might have been burning in your mind about process or, you know, any aspect of your public service that she can address. So we're going to load the presentation up right here, and then please take the floor. And I'll act as your your person for any.
You have a slide. Sure. I also have a physical copy of the presentation too.
Oh, good. That'll help. But just say beep.
Yes.
Thank you.
You like the copy to follow us? You don't have to, but. Okay, so are most of you looking at this screen? Sorry. Okay. Feel bad. Um, so thank you all. I'm Jessica Ritter, an attorney with Shipman and Goodwin. It's a pleasure to be here. I've been asked by Dr. Willet and your chair, Mr. Holt, to just give a brief overview of your board roles and responsibilities and what your statutory charge is. Now that some of you are new Board of Education members, but even for our more seasoned Board of Education members, every time I do this presentation, I am told that you pick up a little more additional information. I think in terms of timeframe, Tony, let me know what you're thinking, because I will. It's a very comprehensive presentation. Most of what you need is in the presentation, so I will highlight what I think is probably most relevant, but I want to be thoughtful to your timeframe.
Absolutely, and thank you. We had estimated about an hour.
Perfect.
Jen and I were just discussing if there's, if you hit the high points and there are anything that we've seen before that we really think didn't get addressed, we'll bring up on the Q and A.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And certainly feel free to stop me at any time. I have built in some scenarios into the presentation, so there's kind of a Q and A portion not to certainly call anyone out, but hopefully just to foster some good discussion. You should know that all the scenarios are based on real live situations that we've had with our clients. So you never know what you can expect that arise in 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 your public roles. So the agenda will cover your roles and responsibilities. We'll talk about board meeting essentials. We'll definitely spend some time on the Freedom of Information Act, as well as the executive session. We'll talk a little bit about public comment. And then if we have time, we can talk a little bit about parliamentary procedure, but we probably won't get to it. But again, the slides are very comprehensive and helpful. So, Dr. Willet, if you don't mind. Okay. So let's start with a scenario, though. Can you?
Yeah.
Just so I can see all of them.
Sorry, Tony, you won't be able to see much. Yeah.
There we go. Okay. Sure. So we're just going to start with a scenario. So this would be, let's see what you know, testing your knowledge. So yesterday, the local newspaper published a front page story about a teacher employed at the middle school who's arrested for selling narcotics in the community. The article identifies the teacher by name and school. Parents from the middle school come to the next board meeting, and during public comment, several of them address the board to express concern that this teacher should be fired immediately. You have a fourth parent who comes up to speak and attacks the board for sitting there silently like bumps on a log and asks the board members what they're going to do about this teacher. So go to the next slide, please. The question for you is, can you, as a Board of Education member, during this very public meeting, reassure the public or the people who are making the public comment that you will fire the teacher in live time in that instant moment? Yes, no, or it depends?
You know, you're not sure.
If I do, it might, I can share it if you want.
We have Rini's.
Oh, no, that's fine. You know, I'll get a physical copy of mine too, so if you want to put the some of that back up there, I can read it.
No, no, same. No, same. I thought the same thing. Don't worry about myself. It's trying to. I'm in charge of any like communication.
Just to say, I'm not the only one who can't see it. Anyone zooming in can't see it.
Is that good?
You see it now?
See, the thing is, I see it on screen reported.
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
That's great.
All right. Oh, of course. All right. So what do we think? Yes, no, it depends?
No, no.
No. No, but why? No. Yeah, Jaden.
Because it's an ongoing legal matter.
Okay.
And a personnel matter.
Okay.
And the board doesn't manage teachers.
The board doesn't manage teachers. That's exactly right. But why doesn't the board manage?
It's terrible.
Right. That's exactly right. So who's your one employee? Dr. Willet is your one employee. But also, what? So this is your one employee. We'll get to that slide momentarily. But in addition to that, what role could you potentially have in the termination or the disciplinary matter of a teacher?
If if he, if Dr. Willet decides to fire the teacher and they object to that, they come forward, board, nor the judge and jury.
Correct? Right. So there's a process. So if I am a tenured teacher, there I, first of all, the terms and conditions of my employment are governed by my union contract. Same thing with administrators, same thing with most of your employees are unionized and have contracts in their respective unions. But in addition to that, our teachers, and rightfully so, have very significant statutory protections. There's a whole process by which, if you had a teacher who engaged in, obviously, this misconduct is significant, we would be looking to terminate that teacher. But we can't just summarily discharge a teacher. There's an entire statutory process under 10-151 where superintendent of schools would first have to make a recommendation. It then goes before a neutral panel, doesn't even come before the Board of Education. That panel member will make a decision to say either yes, there was cause under the statute to fire a teacher who was selling narcotics in the community, or there isn't. You're not bound by the recommendation, but then it ultimately comes to you, the board. The problem is, if you're making comments, and this does happen sometimes, whether it be at a public meeting or social media, that teacher can say, well, how can I get a fair trial if I know that Ms. Galichant or Mr. Holt talked about me publicly in a meeting and determines that I was guilty before they even heard all of the facts? So you can get caught up in significant litigation if you were to get involved. Now, I'm talking about a very public meeting, but I also want you to be aware that even if you went on social media to say either that you supported the teacher or you didn't support the teacher, it really could taint the process. You might get stopped though in the grocery store. You might get stopped in a soccer game. You might get stopped on your way out of here to say, I don't understand, why can't you do anything about this teacher? And you have to respect the process. You have to understand that there's exposure and liability if you get too intimately involved before you're supposed to legally be involved. And the line really is, I'm sorry, it's not within my purview. That is something that the superintendent handles. As frustrating as that can be, that's kind of the party line that you have to take. Where I see this happen a lot sometimes is when an employee is maybe on leave for something DCF related, and you get a lot of questions and people want to know answers immediately, or people want to know answers from the administration immediately, even board members. There's a reason why Dr. Willet can't always give you all of that information in the immediacy. And part of that is, one, we have to let the process play itself out. DCF has their own statutory process that they have to follow. When DCF's involved, we have to take a significant step back. So sometimes I think people say, I don't understand why I can't have this information. Just trust that there are legal reasons why you can't have that information, even though you are a Board of Education member. And when it is appropriate for you to have that information, Dr. Willet and myself, or whomever else might be handling the case, will certainly make sure that you have all the information you need if and when you have to make an actual decision. So any questions about that? You may also find yourself in something less serious like this through any of your union contracts that you're serving as judge and jury to Ms. Galichant's point on a contractual issue. So maybe you violated the contract because the administration didn't fund the HSA deductible appropriately. That's going to come to you if it is denied at the lower levels. And again, you want to just stay out of the matter until it comes before you, for the reasons that we just discussed. Okay, moving on, if you don't mind, Dr. Willet. So just a few things I want to touch upon here. So you are an agent of the state. If you actually went to the Connecticut Constitution, it tells you that the state legislature has specifically delegated responsibilities of the educational arena to our local and our regional boards of education. You are a policymaker for the school district. So I don't know, Tony, whether you've done your committee assignments yet. So who's on the policy committee here? Okay, so Dana's on it, and who else is on it?
She's the chair.
Okay. All right. And how how do you enjoy the policy committee?
We haven't had a meeting yet.
We haven't had a meeting yet.
It's great.
So one thing I will say is, over the last decade, I would say, the state and the federal government have further encroached upon your ability to be as autonomous as you probably like to be. There are a lot of policies you have no discretion in whatsoever. So a DCF policy, that's going to be verbatim, pretty much regurgitating the statute. You don't have a lot of discretion there. Bullying the school climate, we don't have a lot of discretion there. You actually, within the next year or two, are going to have to adopt an entirely new bullying policy than what you have now, because the state legislature has charged an agency with developing that policy that's still under review and under assessment. But that's something that will come before the policy committee. But Dana won't be able to really kind of put her finishing touches on it. By law, you're really going to have to adopt it as written. There are certainly some other things, though, where you may have some discretion with respect to some graduation requirements, maybe not all, you know, academics, but maybe electives or PE or things of that nature. But you will spend a significant amount of time on policy. What I like to think about the boards of education role in policy decisions is you're kind of looking at it, you know, up here. And then you have your administration who is implementing your policies or the administrative regulations from day to day. They're in charge of kind of the operational matters. You're in charge of the big picture details. As I said before, Dr. Willet is your only employee. That is the only employee that you evaluate. So you cannot legally evaluate anyone below the ranking of the superintendent of schools. You don't legally have the right to see the evaluation of any of our teachers or administrators without their specific consent. And that is written into law. Our non-certified staff, their evaluations, as well as Dr. Willet's, are subject to disclosure. So the law does draw a distinction between a certified staff person and a non-certified staff person with respect to their evaluations. But you don't evaluate them. Annually, you have to evaluate Dr. Willet. That's a legal obligation. That should be a written document. And I think that you all have been pretty consistent and adhered to those timelines. And then the evaluation process is something that is mutually negotiable between the board and our superintendent of schools. Anything you might want to add there, Walt, at all, about the interplay between the board and the superintendent?
No, just as Attorney Ritter said, you know, there's, I will always do my best to provide you all the information I possibly can. There's every time when I can't, it's because there will be some legal restriction or some reason why I couldn't. So that's that's going to be the only reason. But sometimes it is frustrating. For instance, we will have an executive session tonight where I can only share a certain amount of information. I can't go into the details. And that's part of, that's an example of a process where I couldn't do that.
So if you don't mind, if we could go to two slides from now where it says rights and authority of board members. So some of you are new to the board. You know, one thing that I think is important for you to understand is that you are board members, but you really have the same rights as any other citizen here in Tallad or across the state with respect to your access to information. Unless and until it's something like Dr. Willet had just talked about, whether it be a confidential student matter or an attorney-client legal opinion, that in your role as a Board of Education member is appropriate for you to know. I touched a little bit on social media. You certainly still have the right to be on social media, your elected officials. Obviously, you're going to have presence on social media. That's just the way of the world these days. But the only thing I would caution you about with social media is while you still have a First Amendment right to speak out on issues that are important to you, be mindful that you don't have the right to speak on behalf of the full board. So if there's something that you feel very strongly about, let's say it's, should we put in a new turf field? And the board, maybe it's a it's a five to four vote. It's a very close vote on that issue. You can certainly, you know, Brian, if you felt very strongly that we need that turf field for the high school, you can absolutely take to social media and convey that message. But I would not then sign it as member of the Board of Education. You're Brian Thompson, the citizen. You're Brian Thompson, the parents. We want to be careful because none of you are authorized to speak on behalf of the board, with the exception of Mr. Holt as your chairperson. And even then, he should be seeking the authority of the full board in order to speak publicly on a matter that is within your purview. Some of you are parents, I imagine, in the district too. You certainly still have every right to advocate on behalf of your children. So let's say your child has an issue with a bullying issue, where your child has a 504 plan or an IEP plan. It doesn't mean that you can't be an advocate for your child because you are a Board of Education member. But you should be very mindful that because you are a Board of Education member, there does come a pretty powerful responsibility there. And there are going to be people in that school district, even though you know your one employee is Dr. Willet. They don't view it that way. And so, you know, I had a situation a year ago where a Board of Education member, not here, went into a meeting with a principal because she was very upset with how the principal handled something with her son. She had a right to be upset. It was not handled well. But instead of just being mom and saying, as mom, these are the actions I'm going to take. It was wait until the Board of Education hears about this. This is not going to go without repercussions or, you know, consequences. Well, that's a big problem, right? Because one, she doesn't evaluate him. The superintendent evaluates that administrator. She also doesn't have the right to talk amongst Board of Education members about a personnel matter like that. And he was so upset by it because it was such an emotional heated meeting that he filed an unfair labor practice against her with the Labor Board, basically saying she was intimidating me and interfering with my ability to do my job and making it seem like I was going to have consequences because of her role as a Board of Education member. So I just say that because there can always be that appearance of Board of Education member, even though I'm here as mom or I'm here as dad. Sometimes those lines are blurred. So I would just say, if you're going to send a communication to a teacher because you want to talk about your child, use your personal email. I think that that's best. And we'll talk a little bit why you should always use your Tallad email for board business. But also just be very careful not to kind of, of course, someone might say, hey, Ms. Galichant, you know, I know you're the vice chair, Mr. Holt. Congratulations on being a chair. You can have that conversation. But just be mindful not to use it in a way to gain or curry favor in any way.
Just quick, quick.
Yeah.
So the other thing maybe to be mindful is that people can't be perceived as having a meeting outside of the public meeting process, right? So for instance, if someone were to come on social media, and normally it's natural to exchange. But let's say they're starting to exchange something. We're talking about football field. If multiple board members jump on a thread and are responding back and forth to each other, and we're talking about something like a football field, that could be perceived as.
Oh, absolutely. We're going to get to that. Absolutely, Dr. Willet. So we're going to talk about the Freedom of Information Act and how that pertains to you as elected officials, and also what is a meeting and what could be construed as a legal meeting. And that's what Dr. Willet is is getting at. Just quickly on the next slide, you know, your involvement with students. So in addition to your personnel matters, you also serve as a quasi judicial function with respect to student matters. Most student matters, again, like personnel matters, you don't legally have the right to any information pertaining to students unless and until you need to to inform your role as a Board of Education member. So what I mean by that is, if you had an expulsion proceeding, you legally have the right to have any confidential student information shared with you in that meeting because ultimately only a Board of Education can expel a student. Prior to that, so if we're just talking about a suspension or a detention of a student, unless it's your own child, or unless we have specific consent from the other parent involved, which we typically would not have, you don't have any greater right to that information than anyone else would. And so it's the same frustration where you might get the question at the grocery store at the basketball game. You know, I I heard this, you know, I've had some very serious student matters. I've heard that this student, you know, made some very grave threats against multiple students or faculty members. What are you doing about it? And lots of times, you're not, one, you may not be in the know, and you legally cannot be in the know because there's some significant exposure if we're sharing confidential student information under the law when you don't need that information to do your job. Or two, again, it may be that it's coming to you before the expulsion proceeding, but you have to go in impartial because you will have to sit as judge and jury. So sometimes board members get frustrated, and I completely understand it. But there's a method to why the information is shared with you when it is. It's really to protect the district. You have a fiduciary obligation as elected officials, as a Dr. Willet, as your employee. And so these are all things that that are kind of happening behind the scenes, and that's why. Yeah, of course.
So just because you've mentioned exposure.
Yeah, of course.
You're speaking of the bifurcated year. But if there's a stipulated agreement, we may have to present a stipulated agreement without giving the details of certain aspects of the student's behavior, right?
Yeah, so stipulated agreement is different because with a stipulated agreement, if I'm the parents, I've negotiated an agreement because I've waived my right to have a full evidentiary hearing. So through that negotiated document, you are bound to present what is in the four corners of that document. Otherwise, you should just go to the full evidentiary hearing. So you, as a Board of Education, you don't have to accept a stipulated agreement, though you should know that the family, and oftentimes that they have an attorneys or the administration have worked really, really hard to get to that agreement for a variety of reasons. And also, it's really best for the family and the child to kind of expedite things. So you're not. Um, so you're not bound to accept the recommendation, but there is a reason why those are being done. But a lot less information is shared through a stipulated agreement because again, the parents don't really have the same right to rebut information that they would at a full evidentiary hearing, which they have just waived their right to. And so there's some legalities associated with that. Anything else you wanted me to touch on?
Well, just so if, uh, if the deep, if the, if the board wanted to go through the full details, they would have to reject it and go to a hearing, right?
I would, yeah.
That would be, that would be the option. Otherwise, we can't share all the details of this personal student information unless they want to go to the full hearing, in which case then the whole thing.
You can share what's in the agreement.
In the agreement.
And what has been negotiated between the parties.
Right.
Otherwise, and, and you certainly have the full right to do so. So the stipulated agreement will often say, so let's say there's three of you, because we only need three board members to sit in an expulsion proceeding. We need three affirmative votes to expel a child. Let's say you said, we're going to reject it, we need a full evidentiary hearing. Within that stipulated agreement, we always put in there that if you reject it, the family can't then say, well, you're now tainted, so you can't sit in that next hearing because there's only nine of you, right? So if five of you showed up to the meeting, you know, it can be problematic, right? Um, and then only two of you were available for the next one, we have a problem there. So we make sure that you can still then attend the full evidentiary hearing and they can't make a claim later on that you were tainted and you can't be impartial now. So we work that in.
So does that make sense? You can't, you can't be tainted prior to a hearing. So that's why only certain info is available in a stipulated conversation versus if you said, well, we want to hear everything, we'd have to then go to the full.
So in this case, the board may have to choose to accept or reject the stipulated agreement with very little actual information as to what the event or the, the situation.
You can have the information that's in the agreement. Now, I don't know what's in the agreement, right? But typically, the agreement does cover at least the nature of the incident. It may not get into the student's private disciplinary history, it may not get into all of that. And part of that is because that can really be very prejudicial to a student, right? And the parents have gone through a lot to get here emotionally, and they're also being, in most cases, extremely cooperative and accepting responsibility for it. You can't get to a stipulated agreement if the parent and the student aren't accepting some responsibility, right? So it's, it's also another way to look at it, like, okay, they understand, they really thought about this, they recognize that the child should have some consequences. Um, and they're willing to work with the administration. We don't always get families who are willing to work with us in that manner.
So it'll be more clear when you have your first step, like what's in the stipulation, you know, we get to know. Lady on it.
So it's tough to make a decision with, with limited information, right? But I think it's important to know the parties that are involved to make that agreement. Because as you said, there's a lot of hard work that goes into it. So typically, what parties are involved to create the stipulated agreement? Because again, if I know, you know, anyways, typically, I guess that's my question.
Yes.
It's tough one.
So, um, not all families get lawyers, but many do. So I would say the administration has a lawyer, um, family has a lawyer. Certainly the family's involved, you will likely have, certainly Dr. Willet is involved. Depending on, let's say if it's at the high school level, certainly will be the building principal, the assistant principal. Um, you may potentially have a teacher or two that's involved. The other thing about stipulated agreements, that's to your point, Dana, is sometimes in order to prove your case, you might have to bring other students to testify. And everyone is loathe to do that for the obvious reasons. And that's another reason why sometimes you pursue stipulated agreements because we don't want to have to bring other students into a hearing. Well, you can't just expel for hearsay only. So you need some direct testimony. When I've seen some very serious issues, like sexual assault, et cetera, that is the last thing that we want to do, is to have to bring a victim in to testify because the other family can say, you don't have any direct evidence if we don't bring in the victim. And that can get litigated through the court system, and I've lived that and it's terrible. So if you can get a stipulated agreement, even if it's not exactly what you would have wanted, know how hard people worked to get that. And it's also really out of sensitivity and compassion for the other students who may be involved. Yeah, absolutely. Um, real quick on negotiations, any of you know who's on the negotiations committee? So, okay. Um, have you done negotiations before? No, okay. So negotiations are very interesting. So most of your staff is unionized, um, your teachers and your administrators. Those negotiations are driven by statute, so we have very significant hard timelines. So you have to get that done within like a nine-week timeframe. Your non-certified staff, you have more time to get it done. You can seek waivers through the Labor Board that you can't. With your certified staff, the theory being those are your most expensive line items from a salary and insurance standpoint. So we negotiate prospectively before you build your budget for the next year. Um, I think you have five or six unions, Dr. Willet, is that correct? Yeah, and you know, it's a, it can be a wonderful process because especially here in Tallinn, there is a lot of, um, the, the negotiations that I have been at, it's been a lot of great collaboration, teamwork with the unions. Um, and again, the contract is what governs their terms and conditions of employment. So obviously, the very important document for both parties. Um, so maybe if we could move on, I'm thinking skip scenario two and go on to, if you could go to board meeting essentials, Dr. Willet.
Which slide is that, uh, am I getting those?
Keep going. There we go. Okay. So I'm going to talk about the Freedom of Information Act because this is probably, I can't tell you how often I am at the commission now. So I would say in the last five years, I think part of it is pandemic-driven. We're getting more freedom of information requests than, I, I mean, even the commission themselves will say how overwhelmed they are, how inundating they are. Um, hearings are not expedited the way that they used to be. So a complaint could be filed against the district and it might take six to eight months to even get scheduled. Um, if there's one thing that you take away from this presentation, I would say this. You're all elected officials now. Some of you have been elected officials before, for some of you, this may be new. Everything that you do related to board business that you put in writing, whether that be via email, whether that be text, whether that be social media, any other way of communication, will be subject to disclosure if anyone under the sun asks for it, unless it falls into a very, very narrow exception. Uh, we have the most extensive open sunshine laws in the entire country. And so the way that the Connecticut Freedom of Information Commission, who governs FOI and our Freedom of Information laws, the way that they look at things is transparency all around and everything should be made available to the public, again, unless there's this tiny, tiny, tiny exception. I would also highly recommend, like I said before, that you use your district email. Do you all have district emails? To conduct board business. One, certainly for the reason I said before, if you were emailing a teacher about a child or some other situation and you're not wearing your board hat for it. Um, but also because you will get FOIA requests. They come in a lot. They come in from, they could be the J I, they come in from citizens, they come in from parents. And what we legally have to do is we have to put out like a litigation hold to say this complaint has been filed or this information has been requested. It pertains, let's say, to our Board of Education members. I need all Board of Education members to search, if you're not using your district network, to search your private phones, search your private email. And then I'm going to have to have you sign an affidavit to say, yes, I went through all my private email addresses, my text messages, and I don't have anything that is responsive to this. If you don't use that for board business, then I can say, and I can have you just sign an affidavit to say, I only use the board district network. Then IT here will just pull whatever is deemed responsive. They'll generate searches, they'll put in buzzwords, it will probably pull thousands of documents. And then Dr. Willet and his team, and then sometimes me, if it's a very technical issue, will go through those documents to produce what is both responsive to the request, but also what we legally have to disclose. So it makes it a lot easier for everyone and it saves you a lot of time and a lot of headaches as Board of Education members. Um, so in other words, you can't say, because I communicated about turf field on my work or company phone, that I don't have to hand that over. The commission has very broad powers, and if they felt that there was evidence to suggest that you did have it and you either deleted it or just weren't producing it, they can, you know, subpoena your phone, they can, you know, pursue those records. They can also impose fines. And I don't say any of this to scare anyone because everyone here I know, um, is very professional. But I just want people to understand that there are consequences for not complying with the Freedom of Information laws. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please.
Yeah, of course, you keep going on.
FOIA?
I had some FOIA questions.
Oh, yeah, I have a lot more on FOIA, um, okay. But yeah, what's your question?
Well, I can, I can see what you talk about and then ask a question.
Okay, all right. Well, so real quick, so the other thing that Dr. Willet was getting at, in addition to paper or text messages, is what is a meeting? So here's the definition of a meeting. So right now, we're in a public meeting, you have posted for this meeting. This is a regular meeting, right, Mr. Holt? Okay. So you posted this meeting, um, in advance of January 31st. All of your regular meetings are posted with your chat club. Anything in addition to that is by definition, a special meeting. There is an emergency meeting status, but it's never worth using. Um, here's the definition of a meeting. So it's any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum, so for you, a quorum is five, of a multi-member public agency, and any communication by or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether it's in person, by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon something within your purview. So what Dr. Willet was getting at, if five of you start going back and forth on an email on something, let's say the turf field, how you're going to vote on the turf field, not only are those emails going to be subject to public disclosure, but it would be construed as an illegal meeting. The reason why illegal meetings are problematic, um, particularly if we hold an executive session improperly, which we'll get to, is the commission also has the ability to null and void action that a board has taken if there's evidence that it was done through an improper, uh, manner. So again, these are rules that, once you live them, because I'm sure, you know, um, most of you who have lived it, once you learn it, it's, it's like riding a bicycle. But there are some very important provisions just to be mindful of. Um, Dr. Willet, can you? Okay. What is a meeting not include? So we've just gone through our definitions of a meeting. You can, uh, meet without posting. So when I have a meeting, I have to post under FOIA. I don't have to post if, um, it's a personnel search committee. Typically, that would be that the entire board is appointed to look for, um, a superintendent of schools or maybe an assistant superintendent of schools, some very high executive position within the district.
Um, I was just going to say, there to say.
You can, you can meet without posting, but then you have to vote on the final contract in open session. The rationale for that is the unsuccessful candidate should be able to re- remain anonymous so that their places in business don't know that they're looking. Um, a social meeting, so can you all go watch? If you all have daughters on the same basketball team, can you all go and watch? Absolutely. But if you take advantage of the fact that you're all there, you start talking about board business, that can be problematic. Any collective bargaining, so all the negotiations, we don't have to post for. But when you get to the point that you are voting on those contracts, that has to be done in open session. Probably the biggest, um, thing that I see is caucusing. So I don't know where anyone's party line is here, but if all the Democrats wanted to go meet tomorrow, they don't have to post for that, they can caucus. Same with our Republicans. However, the Democrats, and I had, uh, uh, a caucus ask me last week, can you just come meet with our caucus because we have questions? And I said, no, because that's an illegal caucus. I am not on the board event, so if I come to that, you've waived your right to call it a caucus. Same thing if you wanted to invite the Republican town chair into your caucus. They're not on the board, he or she are not on the board, so that would waive that privilege. You also can't hide behind the fact that I shared this document with Jen in caucus, so therefore it's not subject to disclosure. If it's subject to disclosure, just generally, it meets the definition of a public record, you can't say, well, because it was only shared in caucus, they don't have to share it. Um, all right, moving on, Dr. Willet, if you don't mind. Okay, real quick, I'll just point out two very distinctive, um, differences. So we have a regular or special in our emergency. We post 24 hours in advance the agenda for the regular and the special. The difference is if you're going to do hybrid meetings of this nature, or if you were going to do a fully remote meeting, which you legally are able to do post pandemic, you have to notify people 48 hours in advance that you are, um, having a hybrid for a fully remote meeting. The agenda can still be posted 24 hours in advance, but the notification to the public so that if they wanted to come here and participate because they don't have electronic means, they now know that they can. If I have a regular meeting like today and Mr. Holt said, I forgot to put on the agenda the curriculum, uh, committee issue we wanted to discuss, how do we address that if I'm at a regular meeting and I forget business items?
Can we?
Motion to.
Yeah.
Can we make it before we adopt the minutes?
If it's a regular.
If it's a regular meeting, we can have put a motion in to add.
Absolutely. So Dana, how many people have to vote for that? What's the percentage?
I was, I was, I'm going to go with, uh, two-thirds.
That's exactly right. So it has to be two-thirds of those present in voting. But if it's a special meeting, I'm out of luck. So special meeting, it can only be the business that I put on the agenda. I cannot go outside the scope of that. Yeah, sure.
Just for clarification, the, the posting regulation for a regular meeting applies to committee meetings as well.
Absolutely. So committees are deemed, um, it, it's exactly right, they're deemed a subset of the board. And because they're board-sponsored, board-driven, they have to be posted, um, just like any other meeting. However, if the superintendent meets with his administrative staff because he's not on the board, that's a distinction, right? Absolutely. Um, so I just want to go, if you could go to the executive session. But before we get to that, Jen, did you have a question?
Yeah, so relating to FOIA.
Yeah.
You, you didn't discuss whether or not there's a cost associated with FOIA or plus.
Okay.
Yes.
So that depends on board policy. Your board policy, I believe, which is consistent with most boards across the state, would say that if you want a physical copy of something, I can tell you upfront that we're going to charge 50 cents per page and you have to prepay that before I hand that over. So sometimes people ask, they might say, I want all the emails between, uh, you know, Jaden and Tony over the last three years, and I can't object it, FOIA, they're going to say, you have to do it, which is going to take a long time because someone has to go through all of that and you have to find all of those materials, even though that is all really broad. But then we can say, well, this has generated 5,000 documents, we're charging 50 cents per page. There is, however, a waiver if I can demonstrate that I wouldn't be able to afford it and otherwise I wouldn't be able to have access to the information. And scanning, I think they're working on whether scanning and the labor involved in that is something that can be charged, but right now it's kind of a loophole.
But it is a cost to the board for the time and resource.
Oh, that's, oh, the cost to the board, yes. There is definitely a cost to the board because again, if the request generates 5,000 documents, someone has to go through all of that, um, because you, you want to make sure that I'm not pulling anything that has confidential student information on it that might have any attorney-client communications on it. So it's really important that you go through all of it, and that can take a long time. And then sometimes if it's a very sensitive, um, you know, if we get a FERPA request related to a child or a pending litigation matter, you're going to want a lawyer probably to look at some of those things, and then obviously their time and money would be charged as well. So it can be a very costly endeavor.
Redactions, sometimes you have to make sure. Redactions. Sometimes you have to make sure that there's no confidential student.
Right, right. And you spend time doing that. So I would just advise. If you, if there's something that you need to communicate to one another, pick up the phone. You don't, you don't always have to put something in writing. You know, I even had a situation honestly today where it happens where people get frustrated and I, I get it, but someone wrote something. And she didn't catch it and she offered it in a hearing today and it really put the mom. On blacks. It said some things about the mom that were really not very flattering. And it, it puts you in a very difficult situation. Um, I had a situation five years ago where we were in a out-of-district placement litigation. So it was a due process hearing. Out-of-district placements can be three hundred thousand dollars a year. And we were fighting with this family because we felt that we really could, we had wonderful teachers and. Behavior technicians and we felt we really could effectively educate the child in-house. Parents didn't think so. They requested everything under the sun related to their child and every communication between these two teachers. Again, it took us a long time to produce all of that. But as we're going through it, there's all these communications between, um, some faculty members about. How awful the mom was. Now, the mom was awful, but it was all in writing and it was saying really bad things about the mom. Um, not such nice things about the child. Now, the child was very challenging, but again. If they had just walked down the hallway to their colleague and vented, we all need to vent, I get it, but because it was in writing. It becomes a record of that child because it references the child's name and then it said what it said. And that technically is something we had to hand over in litigation through discovery. We ended up paying for an out-of-district placement. I mean, it wasn't, those are things that even though I think we would have won otherwise. We felt we had to settle the case because it was pretty damaging. So I say this all the time, people go, oh, I won't do that. And then people forget or they. Get upset and they don't wait twenty-four hours and, and they put things in writing. And so I would just say. Be, be mindful about it because they can have some consequences. Um, yeah, of course, yeah.
As you said, we have, we get several FOIA requests, so just wanna iron out a few more things. So. Given that each FOIA request is different, you could not estimate a cost to me right now for what a FOIA request costs. The district because each one would be different, correct?
Yeah.
But we do, we previously tracked FOIA requests on our FOIA tracker. Is that the thing that we're gonna continue to do this year?
It's up to you. I, I have, there's FOIA requests I haven't put in that tracker because we just hasn't been timed. But, um, I can't, if you want me to put all of the ones from the receivers. Yeah, there's, it's a, it's a cost on a spectrum of costs and some are stream of costs that.
Can we assign costs per line item to those FOIA requests so that we can track it and review it and FFC for the board? And know what we're spending on FOIA requests?
I could report an estimated cost. If you wanted me to, I would, yeah, I could include human hours that are dedicated to it as well. Because for instance, we have a couple right now that are requiring quite a few human hours to, to execute. So you're losing productivity if you. It, it, you'd have to let me know whether you wanted me to take that person's salary and multiply it by the number of hours you utilized to complete the request. Because that could actually be an, you know, impact cost too.
I was gonna say, I think the more, the more we have you do with that, the more expensive it's gonna be.
Yeah, and that's, maybe that's a conversation we can move to another time because. I mean, while I could certainly understand the, the desire for the information, I'm also concerned about. How much time we spend trying to calculate the amount that we're spending. So, so just making sure that we get that balance. It's maybe something that we take offline.
Rainie will get you.
I'm sorry. Was that me? Yes?
Not yet, Rainie. Hold on.
Yeah, board members, like your citizens, right? You have every right to make a Freedom of Information request. Like I said. You're not necessarily entitled to everything just because you are a Board of Education member. And so sometimes. It does make sense for Board of Education member to make a FOIA request, though I think the hope is. That you operate in a manner where really, if, let's say, if Brian really wanted to see some financial information that he has every right to see because. Any citizen would have the right to see that. Um, and he didn't feel that he was getting it. The hope would be it would funnel through your chair, who then could funnel it to Dr. Willett. Rather than it going maybe directly to Dr. Willett. And I think that's why the chairperson serves. A variety of reasons. It's a very, very helpful resource, but I really see also Mr. Holt's position as a liaison. Between the rest of the board and Dr. Willett. And it might be that Brian's request for some of those financial documents, well, maybe. Dana and Jen also wanted to see those same documents. So I do think it's helpful that, let's say Brian says, I wanna see, you know. All of the, the documents that went into preparing the superintendent's budget. Process that through our chairperson and then when Dr. Willett provides it, he gives it to all of you through your dashboard. So that you all have access to the same information because you all should have access to the same information. Um, just like any legal opinion that I repeat, you, all your. Your bylaws would say that only Mr. Holt and Dr. Willett can incur legal expenses on behalf of the district, right? But that doesn't mean that if I write a legal opinion for Mr. Holt. That the rest of the entity isn't entitled to see that because you're all part of the entity. So I don't just. Provide legal advice to Dr. Willett and to Mr. Holt. You would all have the right to see that. Though we have to share it in a manner where we recognize that the entity holds the privilege. And one of you doesn't have the right to waive that privilege on behalf of the entity. The full entity would have to vote to say other people could see this.
The other thing to keep in mind is, uh, there's nine of you. So let's say five of you requested something that's forty-five different things, right? So what's helpful is if you funnel your requests either through your subcommittee chairs or your chair. Then that funnels it to the committee level and then I execute, you know, we have to determine. Which thing happens first. So, you know, if there were five people asking, you know, out of nine members for nine. That'd be so many requests. I need, I need the board chair or the subcommittee chairs to prioritize what they want me to do first, second, and third. So that's part of it is, um, you know, you have a protocol for how and, you know, how you wanna get your work done. And that should usually be through your subcommittee chairs, um, and your board chair. And then we have a discussion of priorities because some things will have to happen before others. And that's kinda how workflow would work on a board of nine people asking for multiple different things. Somewhere it has to get prioritized for me so I can, you know, figure out which ones you want me to do first, second, third.
Right. So what I'm hearing is then FOIA should not be used to prioritize. Information. We should do that through our chair or our committee chair. Rather than put in a FOIA request that would then take time and resources and cost.
From a practical point of view and then. From a practical point of view, um. My responsibility to use to do the work that you prioritize for me. So I'm doing that. When we get a FOIA request, we have to process that FOIA request in the time available. So you're actually probably better suited going through your chair or whatever, for whatever prioritization you want. And talking about it with your chair about what priority it should or shouldn't be, because technically there's a timeline for FOIA, but. As, as you were just pointing out, we do that, we have a certain amount of staff to execute a series of FOIA requests. We do it. We might assign an hour a day or a week to a project because that's all we can assign to it because we don't have enough staff to do otherwise. And we're bound to provide information in the timeline that we can create it as long as we're not stalling for some reason. So it's actually better, it's a better system of doing it just to get agreement among yourselves on what you wanna see prioritized. And then not use that mechanism because that mechanism, basically, in that line, you have the right to do it. But it takes time and resources and it actually may not, actually, you know, it may be faster to go through your, your leadership.
One thing I'd like to point out is, you know, some of the things that each of you may be curious about that you've been wanting that information. There may be value in us discussing and looking at it here. So by bringing it up and saying, hey, I'd like to know more about that information. We can look at it and then decide if it shows up on an actual board agenda. So instead of just Jaden getting the information, the whole board can talk about it. We can look at it. We can make sure that business and the actual actions that need to happen. Can happen in this kind of a transparent form where we have the power of our mind on this.
And then information's published publicly or on your dashboard, you know, that's a good, but it helps when you prioritize it through your leadership structure.
Rainie?
Never mind.
So I, I think it's great, I think, um, figuring out what, what that looks like, I guess, between, you know, leadership. I like following through chair, vice chair, or the committee chairs because I think it's important to, to talk about. There are things that I might think are important that maybe aren't even on Jaden's radar. And then when. But if we're all mine sending him emails, now we're just burying him with emails, right? So I just think. The effectiveness of the communication is just gonna be so much better. And in turn, our response for the things that we're looking for is gonna increase. Versus burying him and then waiting weeks or whatever.
And to just let you know, as I, I share my number with you and all that, I have no problem with you reaching out and asking questions or me helping you work out things for subcommittees or settings here. But if, uh, say one of you wanted a fifty-page report on something, I would request you go through the leadership. To determine, because if one asks for a fifty-page report, someone has another twenty-page printout and somebody wants whatever. I would need someone to prioritize that for me. So I'm not irritating all three or five or nine of the people asking. So it goes through your leadership, either through your subcommittee chair or chair or something like that, but you can always call me and ask questions. If you ask me something that I think is big, I might say, you know, please push that, you know, put that through your. Chair, vice chair to, to set a priority for it with the other work.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So let me talk about executive session here. So let's go to this scenario, if you don't mind, Dr. Willett, the next slide. So this is probably, uh. The most violated provision of the Freedom of Information laws, hand down. Um, all right, so here's the scenario. So I have the Nutmeg Board. They're in a special budget meeting. When it learns of dire economic news that meant significant staff in touch were necessary. Knowing that the board would need to discuss and decide the elimination of specific positions. And not wishing to needlessly distress its employees, the chair adds an executive session item to the agenda to discuss, quote. Personnel matters. With a five-to-three vote, the board enters executive session. After an hour of discussion, the board members agreed without a vote to direct the superintendent to cut ten staffing positions. So if we go to the next slide, please, thank you. Which statement is incorrect? So which is false? A, the board's agenda must date that the board will go into executive session. B, a vote to go into executive session must be by two-thirds. C, stating that the reason for executive session was, quote, for personnel reasons is insufficient. Or D, the board cannot add an item to the agenda during a special meeting of the board. You think it's incorrect. Incorrect, which is small. Which you're right. D is correct.
I would guess C. The board can, uh, so they're saying that board can. But if it wasn't on the agenda, couldn't you add it through the C, additional division?
Special meeting.
But you're saying, uh, for regular meeting.
No, it's a special meeting. So does your agenda have to state that you will be going into executive session? No. Okay, so the right answer is A, and here's why. Executive session is a status of the meeting. So if I have the appropriate agenda item, so let's say it's discussion concerning the superintendent's contract. If that's the appropriate agenda item, it's a special meeting, that's an appropriate executive session. I don't know if I'm gonna have two-thirds vote to go into executive session. So, so to just state on the agenda, executive session. It's as if you preordained the votes, right? You still need the votes. What I recommend is best practice, though, because I know everyone's like, what? Why would we put that on the agenda, is. Propose for executive session or an anticipated executive session, assuming I get the votes. So that then our public knows, okay, I'm gonna have, I don't have to leave the meeting at some point. Or the rest of the board is gonna get up and go somewhere else at some point. So it's just a status of the meeting. Now, if I had an inappropriate agenda matter. That just said personnel reason, that's not an appropriate reason to then go into executive session. Where C, so where people get C wrong, is you can't just say personnel reasons. The only time that you can go to discuss something that is personnel-related. It has to be the discussion concerning the appointment, the employment, the tenure of a person. In our example, we were discussing positions, but not people. So if I wanna discuss that I have to cut ten paraprofessional positions. That's not an appropriate executive session because I'm not saying I'm gonna cut Brian, Dan, and William. It's, I'm cutting three paraprofessional positions from the budget. I know it's personal to that individual, but I'm not talking about their performance. So it's really when I'm talking specifically about an individual and then again, you have to state what the discussion is about. Personnel reasons is legally insufficient. You have to give more than that. Any questions on that?
Just a clarification, when you're talking about stu- students, though, you can say confidential students.
I'm gonna get into that. Yes, absolutely. So then if we go, so that was just the scenario. So if we go to the next slide. I know, I'll wait. Yeah, I did, so I don't know where to say it. Thank you. Okay, here are the appropriate reasons for executive session. So we talked about discussion. Of appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, help or dismissal of a public officer or employee. However. So let's say if I'm discussing the appointment of a new business manager. You have to say discussion concerning a new business manager. You can't just say discussing a personnel matter. That's illegal. Because I, as the public, am not apprised of what you are discussing in executive session. However, that business manager has the legal right to be notified that you are discussing whether or not to reappoint them. And they have the right to say, you can't discuss me. You have to hold that in open session. You can't discuss me in private session. Now, if they say, I don't want it held in open session, which is what they should say, it should be discussed in executive session. And they say, Mr. Holt. I'm gonna demand, though, that I'm in that executive session. Can they do that?
I don't think so.
Correct, they cannot. They can demand open session, but then it's up to the board. So there's another provision. Um, that would say the board has the right to invite people into an executive session. If they believe that their testimony or opinion is necessary. Now, the FOIA Commission reads that very literally, meaning if you have a twenty-minute executive session. And you invited me in and I'm only relevant for ten minutes of it, you've gotta kick me out after ten minutes. That's not how people actually operate, but that is their very literal reading of that invitation into executive session. Pending claims and litigation, which you actually have to be being sued, so the threat of litigation is not sufficient. Security strategy. So obviously, if you're getting information and even the information that board members get about security issues is somewhat limited. Because that's really mostly the, the chief of police who has the bad information. Um, obviously, you can discuss that in executive session for obvious reasons because we don't want everyone in the public to know where all of our safety measures are. Um, certain real estate matters. So if you're going out to bid, let's say on a transportation issue or on a building issue. Those are things that up until you appoint them can be discussed in executive session. And then to Dr. Willett's point, discussion of confidential records. So that can be a confidential student matter, like an expulsion hearing. Or it could be if you needed legal advice from an attorney. So we've had situations where, uh, your board has come to me to say. You know, we really need to understand what our obligations are with respect to curriculum issues or our obligations with respect to. Um, I don't know, I'm trying to think of some examples that we had. Um, you know, uh. If we get subpoenas for information, how do we respond to that? It's appropriate for me to write a communication. We can discuss that in executive session. I can give you legal advice. But I actually physically have to have an opinion letter. I don't even need to be there. But you actually have to have something from me in writing or any attorney in writing. But you also have to say on the agenda item what the attorney-client communication is about, just like we have to for the discussion of an employee. So you can't just say attorney-client communication. You'd have to say attorney-client communication related to how we respond to subpoenas. Something of that nature. Any questions on that? No? Okay. The one I know, so it's about an hour. I'm happy to answer any questions. There was another. The one I know, so it's about an hour, I'm happy to answer any questions, there was another, um, public comment scenario that might be helpful, but I'll defer to you, Mr. Holt.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I think that's a ways away, but I think it's an important one, um, Dr. Willis. Yep, so here we go. So here's a scenario on public comment. So we can go to the scenario, thank you. Okay, so it's never a good sign when there's a crowd in the boardroom before a meeting. Sure enough, at public comment, a parent gets up and begins complaining about a teacher at the high school. Before she could get very far with her statement, the Board member interrupts her, saying, "We don't allow comments about individual teachers, as that is a personnel matter." The Chair then asked at the long line at the podium planned on speaking about the same teacher. When they all nodded yes, Bob Bombast makes a motion to suspend public comment for that meeting, and the motion is approved unanimously. So the question is this, Dr. Willis, who might want to answer this? Which statement is correct? So since there is no requirement to have public comment, the Board is entitled to suspend it. B, speakers cannot discuss individual students and staff publicly. C, the Board cannot allow negative comments about individual teachers unless a teacher is available to respond, or D, none of the above. I'm gonna go with D, I'm with Brian on this one. But here's why, see, we write these to be hard on purpose. So first one, so I don't disagree that you have no legal requirement to have public comment, that's absolutely correct. You don't ever have to have public comment. Now, your bylaws say you have to have public comments, you'd have to amend your bylaws, but you could legally decide, no public forum, no one has the right to come speak to us. Now, as elected officials, you're not gonna do that, because your constituents aren't gonna be very happy with that. That's not a politically wise move, but you legally can do it. The Board is entitled to suspend it, that's tricky. Because the Board, rather than suspend public comment, I would say if things got really out of hand at a Board meeting, I would recess the meeting, or adjourn the meeting. Not necessarily suspend the public comment. Because sometimes people are maybe suspending it because they don't like what is being said, not because what is being said is unlawful to say. And so with public comment, we have to be very careful that we don't engage in any First Amendment discrimination based on viewpoint or content. So it's important, so you as a Board of Education decide, do you have public comment once, twice a meeting? Twice. You decide as a Board, if I have public comment, I'm basically opening the public forum in this very room. And because I've opened a public forum, if I come up and say I like the color red, you come up and say you don't like the color red. You don't have the right to tell me to sit down, because you stand with the person who doesn't like the color, right? So if you have limited your public forum now, or some places have, so this is why this can be tricky. Some places have limited their public forum to say, you can only talk about things that are on the agenda. And they have every right to do that, and I've seen a lot of places do that recently, because they'll make a decision, and then meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting won't be on the agenda, but that's all people come and talk about. So we look at, like, Killenley, what they went through with their mascots, or what they went through with their, um, you know, Community Health Center, even West Hartford had a big issue with, um, mascots, or big issue sometimes with books that might be in the library, or might be potentially banned in the library. So it's really hard to get business done that way. If, if you're, if you've moved on, you've made a disposition on the matter, and people keep coming. So some places have limited to just agenda items. You can also limit it, though, to say, um, you can't talk about staff or students. Perfectly appropriate. The problem with that, though, is if I come and I say something wonderful about a teacher, you have to shut that down too. Because if someone comes up and says something, I don't like what that teacher did, you allow me to speak, and not that person's speak. As long as it's not hate speech or a personal attack, you've engaged in viewpoint discrimination. So sometimes people just cut that off altogether, but it means you can't hear the nice things too. Um, but that's something for you guys to decide. The other thing I would say about public comment is if you all said, well, you know, I don't really, as a Board member, because you can't go back and forth, right? We don't go back and forth for people who make public comment, we take it under advisement. But that doesn't mean, maybe William says, but I really wanna be heard on this turf issue, I really wanna be heard on this curriculum issue. You can go and sign up, just like anyone else, come down from your chair, get up at the podium, and speak, um, freely during public comment. So Board of Education members have done that, when they have felt, I'm not able to express myself here the way I would like to. So I am gonna sign up for public comment and express myself that way. So, um, I, I wanna be sensitive, I think that's like almost an hour, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a lot more in here about Robert's rules and parliamentary procedure, but I think if you look at the slides, they're very helpful. Um, and then, of course, happy to answer anything, yeah.
I have, uh, one question, it struck me a couple of weeks ago, there was some information put out by the patch uh, regarding this, uh, new, um, Act Concerning Transparency in Education, that new Board members of education have to
Training.
Do some sort of training, or responsibility, or obligations of being a new Board member for this 2024. Is there something that the five people just got elected need to do?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So basically, the training will be like this. This is supplemental to that. What they did was, they said, all new Board of Education members, so like for, for Mr. Holt and Ms. Galichant, and for Ms. Philbin, this, this won't apply, or for Jayden, it won't apply.
Well, and some of the people were re-elected, though. Does that count as a new Board member?
It does for purposes of this, because, right. But you have a year between now and November to get it done, but however, the training is not done yet. So the State Department of Ed has been charged with developing the training, which will probably be a module that maybe you could just do from home. But you don't, you can't do it if you don't have it. So right now, you're off the hook, and I, I guarantee
Yeah, I just saw it, I just hadn't received any information, or heard any chatter about it. I've been elected official for months now, so I just was, you know.
They don't have it yet, and I guarantee you'll be in for a year before they have it, and so you don't have to do it.
Alright, no, no, okay.
I wasn't sure.
Sometimes it comes around for you, it might actually depend on you.
Yeah.
Maybe if we can maybe review that in August or September in the fall, or something, before we're rushing to the gun to get it done.
Yeah, as soon as I know it's available, I will let Dr. Willis and Mr. Holt know for sure.
Okay.
Other question.
Um, near the beginning of the presentation, you talked about, you know, how we have to be careful on social media, we can't speak for the whole war. What do we do, though, when? What is the best practice of how to handle, like, a lot of times on social media, someone will actually ask a question in text. What, what are the kinds of questions we should or shouldn't answer, or how best should we handle that when we are specifically asked a question as a Board of Education member on a public forum on social media?
So, again, on a public forum, I, I, I wouldn't go back and forth with people. If it's specific to a confidential student matter or a personnel matter, I would very much say, please bring this to the attention of Dr. Willis, or your building principal, or the administration. I mean, that really has to be the party line on anything that is confidential or not within your purview, because remember, the student matters and the personnel matters, while they're percolating, are not within your So it wouldn't be appropriate for us to comment, and I think it's most appropriate to direct them to Dr. Willis, or the building principal. Um, and so that's, that's how I would answer that. Now, if the question's as simple as, uh, will the Board be taking up a curriculum matter at some point, and you know the agenda's already out, I don't have any problem with you saying, here's the agenda, the meeting's in two days if you wanna be there. Um, we encourage public participation, I don't have any problem with that. But if it's about a, a sensitive matter, it, the party line has to be, please refer that to the administration.
Other question. So just to go off of that, if I get an email to my new talent email, and it's about a specific, it's not on social media, but it's about a specific individual, something happening at school to a specific teacher, I just order it to you, I thought.
And I, I
You respond anyways, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you give it all, and, and
But no action required of my end.
No, and I copy the Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I send it to Dr. Willis, copy the Chair.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys very much, nice to be you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Well, we were talking slowly for a second, but, um, moving on to committee and the Eastern Reports curriculum. We haven't, uh, we haven't had communication, have not met.
Just about today, um, nothing to report, uh, just this month, but, uh, we are going to be discussing it in this meeting, so.
We'll pause for just a minute.
First meeting, my great elevator music, Aaron.
Is there a break going on here, like, or this thing is all over the place, it's on the students, like, what's happening?
Reading, reading my apologies, the committee report that we're on, uh, I had to step out for just a minute, so we're, we're doing the delay tactic, but we're starting right back up.
Well, I think people should know that what they're talking about is on, on the TV, so it's focusing on you guys, and you can hear what you're saying, so just so you know.
Copy that, thank you.
I'm meeting with Dr. Willis, and it's Wednesday morning. It's just That's my And I've got giggly girls, I don't know. They keep our meeting library.
Moving on to Chair Fertz and her Board. Alright, so we recent, we have recently received an email from a resident that stated, "I have been critical in the past of the talent BOE for not having a meaningful purpose. While ten dash two twenty gives a high-level legal definition, previous boards have failed to show people like this resident the personal and emotional definition of what we do. Over the next couple of years, I challenge each of us to make our purpose clear in both debate and deed. I was reminded of the Fuchus quote that says, 'Education breeds confidence, confidence breeds hope, hope breeds peace.' That sounds like pretty good results. Our Board Attorney, our Board Attorney is going to give us a legal presentation on the roles and responsibilities of the Board Member. Part of this presentation will cover areas of awareness concerning email communication. Please don't see this as a barrier to communication. The intention is to ensure transparency, to make sure that our business is in front of the public. These are all tools that we can use to make our businesses. Tonight, we officially begin one of our taskings. Tonight, the Superintendent will present his proposed budget. Pay attention to the names here. Over the next month, we will take the Superintendent's proposed budget and turn it into the Board of Education budget request. We will own it. It will not be Dr. Willis' budget that's in, that we sent to the town. It will be the budget request that the nine of us have debated and believe is correct to fulfill our educational responsibilities to the children and the residents of our town. The budget request must be mindful of both the suppliers and receivers of each and every dollar. While I personally do not expect a unanimous vote, I do expect that every concern and appreciation has been articulated here this week. Let's begin the good work. Jen and I will be talking to the Town Council leadership later this weekend. The purpose is to identify ways that the groups can work together to make this process more effective. I can say with no doubt that this Town Council and this Board of Education is committed to working together for the good of our town. And we'll earn the confidence. To the Committee Chair, I'm happy to see agendas coming in. While I will try to come to some of your meetings, please let me know if there are specific ones that you would like me to be at. I'm happy to assist as
Thank you.
You're right. So, moving on to the Superintendent's report, Dr. Willis, item K one, the monthly financial.
Sure, so as you know, the, the first meeting of every month, we do the monthly financial report. Um, and so, as we've discussed, you know, we're running very thin this year. Um, we got hit with the transportation contract, we talked about it in FFC, between some special education impacts, placements, and, um, transportation impacts, things like that. You know, we needed to freeze the budget completely, and, um, so each month, we, we're running on a slim, you know, some margin above, above a zero point. So that's no different this month, and, um, yeah, we're taking actions to make sure that we end the year where we need to end the year. But you'll notice that, uh, there's an available balance of seventeen thousand dollars out of a, you know, forty-five million dollars that you put in, in ten, so, you know, I'm just hopeful. It also takes a minute to load, because our Wi-Fi in this area. So, um, and, and at home, you know, you can also see this, if you go to the website and you open up the board packet with attachments, it might be an easier way to view it if you're viewing it at home, um, because sometimes it's real small on the screen. Um, but anyway, what I was saying is, uh, you know, so the December, uh, closing was seventeen thousand dollars roughly, which is point zero for the budget. Um, you know, so we're gonna see it be real tight every month along the way to the end of the year. Um, we are going to, you know, have some money, you know, coming into the system, um, but we've already accounted for a lot of that. And we have excess costs, for instance, coming in February, and then another, uh, payment coming in May. But this, this budget will remain, uh, similar, or this line, um, will remain pretty, pretty similar and close uh, to zero throughout the rest of the year, because of how tight, um, we are right now, and how we're monitoring it. So I'm gonna give you a couple of, uh, highlights of this, and then, of course, I can take any questions back and, you know, provide answers. Uh, or we can break up items, we have to see, um, as the, as the Chair wants. So, um, just stipends are over budget right now by about twenty thousand. Um, this has to do sometimes with, uh, you know, our coaching, and someone who gets over to five years of experience that, you know, that person may go up. Also, um, we collect money to pay stipends, uh, for certain things, um, and so that can impact it. Um, we have, uh, you know, just a little bit over this year, considering where the budget is, so that's probably gonna remain just about where it is. Um, that impact has probably been accrued at this point. Uh, and so we won't see that change a whole lot, but, um, that is one of the things that is over. Um, health, life, disability insurance is over budget. Um, vacancies continue to impact that, because no one's paying into these things, and so that means less collective, we tend to be a little over when we have vacancies in positions. We do have some vacancies right now. Uh, paraeducators, there's still about seven vacancies for the system, and, uh, teachers here and there, not that many teacher vacancies, but, um, that affects it too over time. Um, let's see, Plague is under budget, um, ICMA retirement is over budget by about eleven thousand. Uh, a credit of eleven thousand will be applied this month from the forfeiture account, so that should balance it out. Um, ICMA is, uh, basically for non-certified employees, it's the four oh one A retirement, we pay into that. Um, and so what hap, you know, if the forfeiture account is after five years, some of the money we've sent has come back, and then that's, that hits the account. So you'll see that go back into, uh, uh, balance, um, between one of the next, um, couple of months there. Professional tech services is under budget, um, professional ed services is under budget. Um, legal audit is over budget, and I'm trying to just give you the overs, um, special education, um, and teacher contract negotiations, uh, have impacted the legal lines and pushed them over. So for instance, we had, uh, teacher contract negotiation extend over, so, um, that did cost us a little bit more on intermediation, that type of thing. So for instance, we had a teacher contract negotiation extend over, so that did cost us a little bit more on intermediation, that type of thing. So that put that line over. Tech services, three fifty, slightly over. Online services for math, you know, science, sometimes they end up being a little bit more than we had budgeted originally, and so it's about a thousand over. Again, cleaning rubbish is under budget, repairs under budget, transportation is over budget by three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. Last month's was three hundred and seventy eight, so we, you know, got a little bit better, but really this is getting impacted right now by by two things. It's our special education, well, three things, our special education, transportation. Our our transportation agreement, as you may recall, you know, we set budgets, you know, right now, but usually you won't sometimes have your agreements with transportation until later. So last year, for instance, we were doing the budget, but we didn't have the final transportation bidding and contract completed until June or July. So that was more than what was budgeted for. And as you all may recall, we had one bidder. So that was more than what we had budgeted for. So that impacts it. It's special education. It's the transportation contract that we got. And then McKinney Vento. McKinney Vento is for homeless families. If there's a family that is in a situation where they initiate in McKinney Vento, we have to provide transportation no matter where they are to to our our district. So we have a couple of McKinney Vento impacts right now. It's a, for instance, it's eighty five thousand dollars for the McKinney Ventos at the mall. If it goes out to the end of the year. So I'm working on ways to mitigate that. For instance, I'm looking at seeing if we can get a van and, you know, having a driver we hire from the district to offset some things. But those are the three major things driving the overage right now in the transportation line. So we'll see that kind of evolve as the year goes on. Let's see. Advertising is slightly over because we've had to post more advertisements for more staff. Tuition is over budget by four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. This is because of additional out placements, special need program. This can fluctuate. We're getting hit this year pretty hard as we have in the past years. We've been monitoring that. Keep in mind that an outplacement can be a hundred thousand dollars. So when you have something like one hundred and thirty eight, it can equate to two to two to three or four kids sometimes. So that's that's how that tends to be this big number, but you know, sometimes it doesn't mean that many people, it can thirty thousand can be a transport for for something. So it's it's a, sometimes it happens and we have a fluctuation that's bringing us higher right now. General supplies, that's under instructional under energy is under. We transfer our energy funds over at the very beginning of the year. So we can have a conversation about that. Mr. Sheridan had thought about maybe that is one topic for use of, so I won't say much about that now, but so we transfer at the beginning of the year so that mine will be low. Textbooks are under because they haven't incurred all the expenses for those yet, and we've frozen some of it. Films and video supplies are under by a small amount. But that, those are the basic, I'm sorry, over by a small amount. Those are the basic overs. And the biggest driving overs are the transportation, the tuition, things like that. Which is why we froze the budget. And we're working very carefully, right? Make sure we come in.
Is there any of this new instructional equipment that was supposed to be purchased impacting any sort of classrooms or new projects that are happening or old equipment that's not working in a room because we didn't buy any of this fifty three thousand dollars of the new equipment?
Um, no, I mean, we're still in the process of, you know, working through the year for that stuff. So we're under, but that doesn't mean we're not, you know, we got at the end, if we have funds available, we wouldn't get it. It does create some problems. We can't replace certain things and that can be frustrating, but.
Is that happening or we're not too sure?
Well, it's happening at individual levels, but we're not at this point, because they know we're frozen, you know, there there may be a chance that they would still be able to get it at the end of the year. So I don't think people are, you know, throwing tea off the off the ship for that right now. But, you know, we'll notice that if, and we're not restricting things like, we're not stopping people from making copies. You know, we're not saying you can't use paper because we can't.
No, no, this was under the new instructional, I wouldn't hope that copy would fall, this shouldn't be falling under new equipment.
Well, instructional supplies, things like that. Is that what you're gonna?
No, this says, this says equipment, instructional equipment, new.
Which line, which?
There's the third from the box.
No, but it gives me a code.
Yeah, seven, three, zero.
Okay, seven, three, zero. Yeah, and you know, right now I haven't heard direct complaints about equipment.
Okay.
No, I was, I was thinking instructional stuff. I'm sorry.
Oh, all right.
But you know, I don't have direct, you know, what happens with equipment is it's just, if you can't buy a new, I'm giving you an example, like if they wanted to replace the floor finisher or something and we don't do it, you know, maybe the model, we can't get a certain piece on it anymore. So it might not be an immediate complaint. But if we can't end up using that piece of equipment, we won't be able to clean floors that way anymore, which will require that it's done manually, which means people won't, they've done it fast, you know, that kind of thing. So we wouldn't hear an immediate complaint about that. It's just if that piece doesn't get replaced, we may have future problems. Okay, it may not be something someone immediately calls us on. I was thinking you were talking about instructional.
Well, that's what the line says, isn't it? Or am I misreading this?
Well, I was thinking you were thinking of paper like instructions.
No, no, no. I was thinking like instructional, like whatever sort of projectors they use in a classroom or a monitor breaks that we're not going ahead and spending eight hundred dollars of buying a new monitor for a classroom and use it for instruction. That's what I'm speaking.
Yeah, and like, for instance, if we, you know, short throw projectors, I'm just trying to give you an example of things based on the kind of question you're asking.
Yeah.
So a throat, short throw projector may have a bulb that costs a lot of money, and so we're trying to eliminate short throw projectors for that. That unit won't run anymore on whatever equipment or piece of bulb or board that we need. So if we don't replace it, that means that they just won't have a projector or a projection option. But they're, they're not going to complain about it right now because, you know, they they are trying to be proactive in replacing the. But if we can't, it causes potentially a future problem. So I'm not going to hear about that immediately. It would just be more like, you know, coming up probably as time goes on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I should have brought it up in FFC, but just thinking about it a little bit more as far as outplacement goes. Since obviously we're pretty over right now, year over year, is there a typical outplacement that students are going to like Rockville four to E O Smith four? Because if it's year over year, they're going to Rockville for this agriculture program. And we're doing it a hundred thousand dollars per student at a clip. It just makes sense to hire a teacher at a hundred grand and like stop having people go away.
Actually, it's a great question. We do do that with our LEAP program and our TTA program and our H T A program. So we have lots of internal programs that we do that have give us internal options in district to do exactly what you're saying. But the example you used, not not to pick it, you know, pick it up. So there, it's so hard to understand because there's so many different layers, so many. An ag program, we are required to, there was a, you know, partner and we, when a child wants to go to the ag program, we usually will have to send them to that ag program. But that's not a special education. That's more of a, that's more of a, we don't offer ag in Taland. And you'd have to build either an entire ag program, but you need permission from the state to do that.
Okay.
So that's kind of a, you know, a little bit different of a nuance, but you're right. The question you're asking about, don't we do some in-house things? Absolutely, we do. And the teachers do an amazing job. That TTA is our Talon Transition Academy for our kids that are eighteen to twenty two. And so instead of outsourcing that, pupil services, teachers do an awesome job with that and keep them in our district. So we actually spend a lot less than we would over us. Same thing with LEAP.
A lot of that lies. You know, those opportunities are something that I would, I would stress to both FFC and the curriculum committee, those might be topics that you want to bring in and we can really delve into some of the pathways, some of those other opportunities. They're there. We just need to flesh out committees and then. Any other question? All right. Dr. Willet, item K two in the superintendent's proposed budget. One thing I just want to point out as we go into this one, the purpose of today is the presentation. We will have, obviously, we'll have some opportunity to discuss today, but the intention is not to get into the debating of the specific items. We'll have a whole lot of time over the next month to really get into that. Dr. Willet will talk about some opportunities to answer any questions. Today, I really want to get it out there and let it start to think in where everybody can start really absorbing what it means and what.
And so, given the timeline, given the number of items in the meeting tonight, I want to tailor it to to what you're looking for with respect to the amount of time you're going to spend on it. I'm going to give you a flyover of this, you know, kind of a, just a general flyover. You have the documents to look through. It's going to be posted to the public tonight. You have a series of meetings coming up to address it, the first of which is next week when we have the one on the seventeenth, you know, do a rotation activity. Then the twenty fourth, then February seventh, so you have a series of meetings. So I'm just going to give you the flyover. Please ask any questions that you want and then, you know, you'll have plenty of opportunities to talk to. You can also reach out to me and call me anytime and I'm in opposition. So just a couple of housekeeping pieces. This document is available to you virtually already on the dashboard. It will be posted in public tonight. These are all linked. So you can jump to the sections by just clicking on these selections and so you can jump around a bit if you want to. The other thing is the appendices at the very end of the document are also PDF links. So when you're using the virtual document, you can jump around by using the links. The budget figure is six, it's a six point ninety percent increase. It's a roughly a three million dollar increase to the budget. I know that that seems like it's, you know, a hefty figure to to absorb, but I wanted to give you a sense of kind of where we're at from a budget perspective. So what I did is in the introduction, if you jump over to that, I tried to give you a sense of kind of what that means in with respect to the magnitude of you know, some of the things we have to consider. So if you take a look at page eight, where I have the introduction, even though it's a six point nine percent, six point nine eight percent budget, please note that six point five one percent of this request are they're mostly fixed costs that I don't have any control. So that makes it difficult to bring this budget right now down into a two zone or a three zone, because if you look at this, six point five one percent of it are insurance costs, transportation costs, fuel, contractual obligations, I C M A obligations, tuition, maintenance, that type of thing. So these are things that I don't have, you know, a lot of flexibility on, and so that's why the budget is you know, about six point five percent of that budget is is in these categories. So when we start to talk about what we want to do, we just have to keep, you know, that in mind. The the other piece to keep in mind is what I did here is left some opportunity for you to discuss. I did not do any borrowing against the future methodologies. So we have a year where grants that we have produced, I wrote a, you know, grant this year for our last year for social worker. It's going to help us for a few years. And sometimes we'll do grants that are competitive and they help us and we do quite a few of them. You know, many of the district staff do quite a few of them, you know, and they bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars. But sometimes what will happen is you'll get a few years of grants and then those grants end. So the ARPA grant, you know, is is ending the town, for instance, for insurance. We got two hundred thousand dollars from an ARPA grant from last year to offset insurance. Well, now we have to fill that hole. So we either fill it by taking our insurance reserves or we add it to our operating budget. So two hundred thousand dollars is added to our operating budget. Another example would be, we have three positions in the K five, K two zone that were grant and those those grants ended. And so when those S R grants ended, we have to absorb them into the budget or reduce them. And so what you're facing this year is a number of things that had been funded through other methodologies that are now needing to be absorbed in the budget. Another example would be the one-to-one initiative. There's technology involved with that, as you know. We use the educational reserve fund to offset the impact of that last year. Now, we have to take that into operating budget and that's why you see here that I T E T goes from eleven thousand to four hundred thousand. It's because we are absorbing the impact of that funding that you said we had previously taken out of the educational reserve fund. So some of the things that are happening this year are that we are, you know, needing to then bring into our budget, things that had been, you know, absorbed by other methodologies. And so the board does have the opportunity to do some of this again. But you just have to keep in mind that if you do do those kinds of things to lower this budget, you will face the same situation in the coming budget cycle or the coming, you know, the following year. So it's just stuff to keep in mind, and as a board, I'm sure you'll have a great opportunity to kind of discuss things that you may want to consider for that or not. So in this budget, in keeping in mind the six point five one percent are things that I cannot impact. The original request, not adding anything. If I, if I had added nothing to this budget, it would have been a nine point four three percent. So what you're seeing in a six point nine is bringing it down from a nine point five roughly to, you know, to roughly that six. So if you're counting down, it's 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 almost a million dollars that I would have to find to get us down from a nine to where it is. And and where it is, is already after all those things. So in in order to get there, these reductions, after talking with administration and reviewing, you know, information, on classes, things like that, these positions also are positions where there are people that have retired. And so my two goals are to make sure that we are making adjustments that we can sustain academically. But I also do try to keep in mind, you know, if there's a position that is open and there are, you know, for instance, at the high school, some of those sections you know, are lower than they are K five. Right now, K five sections are quite high. That's why I sent you the enrollment report this afternoon so you could take a look at that. We really don't have much that can happen K five without, you know, absolutely devastating effects. Most of the class sizes in grade five are at twenty five, for instance. So we can't do anything, you know, there. We have to be very careful about that. And so, you know, I tried to do things that, you know, if there was going to be a retirement, for instance, and I knew about it and it would mean an impact on certain sections of social studies at the high school, but it would not just, you know, disrupt that program massively. I put that on there because you're not taking someone out of a livelihood, but you're making a reduction in an area that doesn't have class, you know, does not have the same impact as they say a K five. If that makes sense. So right now, this budget reflects nine positions being reduced. That, even with the nine positions being reduced, it's a six point nine eight. There's actually ten listed there, but what we're actually doing with the B G K, B G P K two teacher is that there were three on grants and we would only be trying to bring two of those three over. That's why it's kind of listed with that asterix. Technically, there will be one less person, but we're really just funding only two out of the three grants rolling into the budget. So that gives you a general sense of of, you know, where the 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 staff impacts would be on us. And that conversation, you know, has a long way to go. I know that this is just first round of that. You'd have to start to really, you know, dig in and look at those things. Additionally, curriculum liaison, grade and team leaders are reduced, are eliminated from this budget. What that means is a massive lift for administrators as they take on some of these roles. They're going to have to do a lot more work and will all have to split it amongst all of us, including myself. You know, to run meetings with different groups of staff. If we do not do that, that figure is about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand. That's five teachers. That's four to five teachers right there. So, you know, the the methodology that I tried to use is I'd rather give everyone on the ship a little less food than throw four people off the side of the ship. I'm trying to throw us, you know, to be in a situation where we're not, you know, doing, you know, reductions of human beings that, you know, we don't have to do. So for instance, this is not an easy thing. It's an extremely difficult thing. But administrators are willing to take on this and look for other ways of rebuilding this in the future so that we don't have to lose, you know, fourteen or fifteen people in order to accomplish it. If we aren't going to do the curriculum liaison, team leader and grade leader positions, we need to be prepared to have a conversation about which additional force staff would be, you know, would not be part of the picture. And that that's a difficult conversation that, you know, would rather not do that because obviously it impacts the children and it affects the staff very directly. So I admit a hundred percent that it is going to be massively difficult to to execute this with our admin, but I believe we can do that. And I don't want to lose four or five additional staff instead. And I don't want to lose four or five additional staff instead. Additional cuts in other areas are for legal services. You know, I'm trying to adjust back a little bit since we don't have, um, you know, as many negotiations in the coming year directly. Uh, class materials, textbooks, library books, summer maintenance service, technology. I cut a number of different areas in the budget and reduced many other areas in the budget to try to get it as low as I could. And so, you know, as we get deeper into this, like I said, it's flyover. I can give you more detail of all of the different things that I cut. But I went through every aspect of every program and I reduced everything that I felt we could reduce without impacting education directly to our kids. So, um, as we get deeper into this and you roll up your sleeves, we'll be able to go into, um, what those reductions were and, you know, what you want to do with that, um, at that point. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, you know, as a positive, you have amazing, amazing staff in this district, amazing teachers, amazing custodians, amazing secretaries, you know, amazing parents, um, admin, the whole group. Every, everyone in this district is working extremely hard. And that shows because the kids are doing very, very well. You know, we are the third highest in our DURB for SAT scores. And we are the fifth highest in our DURB for accountability scores. And that's, that's an achievement. We're higher than most of the districts around us. So, um, your district has performed extremely well, um, on these accountability scores, on these SAT scores. And not only that, I give you links in this document to our data portal. You can see that our staff and our admin, our teachers work really hell very hard on, um, assessments you usually don't hear about. Dibbles, the dork, the Davis, you know, instead of these big things that you hear about, you know, in the media, like SATs, there's actually a lot more effective, uh, assessments teacher they're giving all the way through the year that show how kids are doing and their progress monitoring the kids and adjusting their instruction accordingly. Those scores are extremely important too. So if you take a dip into the data portal, you can see how the teachers and the staff are adjusting what they do educationally based on the performance of the kids. And you can see how great that's going and how hardworking the teachers are with respect to that too. So there's a lot involved and your school district is performing extremely well. What I don't want to see happen is, um, I don't want to see massive teacher losses in, you know, great areas or interventionists or reading teachers or any of those types of things, you know, because that, that'll obviously impact their ability to execute some of these kinds of activities as a group. Um, do the sit meetings with kids, do the sat meetings with kids. You know, it's really important to be able to execute that and we don't have the people or the data. It, it directly impacts how well they're going to be able to serve children. Um, and so again, that's why I say things like, uh, you know, just hitting that again. If we, if we're not going to take things like a great team leaders and so on, then you have to take more people. And just, I think that would be extremely devastating, um, to be going deeper, you know, than that. So, um, you know, right now you have a, a very, very good performing district with dedicated people. Your pathways are still there. You have the engineering pathway. You have the, um, business pathway. Speaking a little bit to what Mr. Sheridan had brought up, you have a lot of magnets and charters these days that advertise themselves as being special in certain ways. You know, for instance, um, and they can advertise because the state gives them a tremendous amount of money. So you could be sitting in the movie theater and suddenly up comes an advertisement for a local area resks, you know, music, art and drama school or whatever. And I'll be sitting there with my sixth grader or now my, my, all of them are actually moving out. Now it's a, now it's an eleventh grader. But I remember being in the movie theater and her saying, gosh, dad, I want to go there. And the thing about it is I had visited that magnet because a friend of mine was a principal of that magnet. And I knew the school district, um, I was working in had exact year had more than that district had. But that advertisement made it look like they, you know, that district was, uh, the magnet was the place to go. And if you go to that magnet, they take dollars with them. So when we have, um, pathways like the business pathway, like the engineering pathway, we actually go to the eighth grade and we talk about these in the eighth grade. And the kids know, oh my gosh, I have this really great option here. And without actually putting too much more, you know, the resource allocation into it, we let them know of the great programming they have to achieve business or engineering education. And they're not as attracted to jumping out to these magnets, taking your dollars with them to do it. So this budget maintains our efforts with the pathways, the business pathway, engineering pathway. And we're hoping to add a music, you know, art and dance pathway. We're hoping to add other pathways to it as years go on, so that we can be as competitive as possible against those magnets and charters, which, um, have received a tremendous amount of money right now. And, um, it's important that our district takes steps to be competitive or the kids will choose them because they'll think that they don't have that option here. So it's important in keeping our dollars in the district and this budget maintains those efforts. It also maintains really important programming that, um, you know, that we need to maintain literacy, um, for the kids. And, you know, you heard the Right to Read Act, uh, this district and the teachers do an amazing job. You know, with phonics and foundations and structured literacy and spire, um, and asserts and, you know, it's in, it's really important to maintain those programs because that's actually what's giving our kids the advantage in their ability to perform. And it's, it's helping us not have kids succumb to some of the challenges of dyslexia because we're addressing it directly. So these programs have names that it looks really easy to look at and say, well, there's a chunk of money. Why don't we just grab that? But if you obliterate that program, it obliterates our ability to help kids avoid impacts of dyslexia. And what you'll end, you know, for example, and then you'll have parents that get to a point and say, your district's not serving my child. I want an outplacement. So if we don't do the things we need to do to maintain, um, appropriate leading, uh, performance and development, that can turn into, uh, what's called SRBI, RCI referrals for tier one, two and three services. And you can ultimately end up with special education referrals that are much more costly than if we had just spent money to maintain those programs in the first place. So we have to be really careful. You're going to see some programs that have dollars connected to them. But if we obliterate those programs, we're not going to be able to offer those supports to the kids. And they are what protects us from additional outplacements. And more importantly, they're what helps the kid, help the kids, you know, get the right phonics and literacy instruction and pronunciation when needed. So those are maintained in this budget. Um, and, you know, it's important to continue to maintain those. So I also wanted to point out, um, the data points are important, you know, in a way because they give you perspective. When you do have to go into negotiations, as, um, Ms. Galchamp will tell you, uh, these kinds of things will come up. So, uh, when, uh, you know, people are looking at what they feel that Talon is going to be able to do or not do, they'll look at the things that are reflected here in the data points. So it gives you kind of perspective in the data points as to where generally Talon is in the spectrum of the state of Connecticut. Um, what negotiations, um, you know, what the bargaining units will consider with respect to Talon when they're dealing with us. And similar things like, you know, what, you know, where is our budget? You have one percent A R F. What are the towns, um, assigned and unsigned? It just gives you a good, uh, understanding of kind of where we are, um, on the spectrum of things as a town and where people see us. Um, Board of Ed budgets, you'll notice that our average over five years is a one point six four percent. Um, average over eleven years is one point seven one percent. If you consider that a two point five to three percent budget is what is necessary to sustain, um, services, you'll notice that, um, you know, there, there is quite a, you know, uh, divide there between, um, the, what is necessary to sustain and what's what we've had over a span of years. So we just have to keep that in mind that, you know, we did get a three percent last year, which was greatly appreciated. And, uh, and I think that, and I'm very thankful to the town for that. But looking at the average over five years, that's a one point six four. And just like this year, you'll notice many years, it takes more than that to sustain the kind of, um, structure you might have. So you'll notice that there's, um, you know, there are some things that we want to keep maintaining here and it does require some investment to do that. Per pupil expenditure, you're a hundred and forty-four out of a hundred and sixty-six. That means out of the hundred and sixty-six districts, you're spending, um, at the hundred and forty-four lowest, right? So that's another sign of where you're at. You know, again, you, you do a lot of fair, you know, there's a lot of fairness in what you provide with respect to a budget. But just keep in mind, you're not being fleeced, you know, where you are in the budgets you're passing. They're reasonable and, you know, with respect to the resources you're providing, but you're not, uh, you're not, you don't have a massive per pupil expenditure. You're not, you know, over the span of eleven years, providing really high budgets. You know, that, that's just kind of a, giving you the snapshot of where, where you are ultimately. The bargaining unit agreements were very, very reasonable. So keep in mind, when you're looking at even those six point five one percent of this budget is in bargaining unit agreements, your negotiations with those units has been highly successful and very fair. So for instance, the teachers are fairly compensated, but their, their compensation, um, was actually below, the settlement was below the, so the settlement that the state, you know, you know, as of that moment in time, the teacher's settlement is, uh, right about average or slightly below average for the settlements as of November, um, when it was the latest data that I could get. So just keep in mind that you're getting a great, you know, the teachers are fairly compensated, but they're, you're by no means being pleased when you see those contracts and you see the, you know, that number. That's, those kinds of things are the result of agreements that have, um, you know, that have teachers compensated at the, at the average, at the mean, not, not ridiculously compensated, in other words. Same thing for your administrators. The administrator's compensation, uh, the settlement is below the average for administrators. So I put these data points in so you can see, you know, through each of these things that nothing is being done unreasonably. Uh, the contracts are not being settled unreasonably. The asks haven't been unreasonable. We're just in a tough space in historic history because of the way that the, you know, state is shifting budgets and ECS and excess costs. Excess costs is supposed to be funded at a hundred percent. It never is. Uh, ECS for your town has been reduced year after year. So we're dealing with some realities, but not, at no point have you been, uh, has the town been put in a situation that, um, you know, that has been, uh, unfair with respect to where your, uh, agreements and bargaining agreements are coming in. ACS class sizes, you get a general idea of where that is, but you'd really have to look at the enrollment report to get the breakdown of where the grades are. That's the important piece. When you look at my budget and you look at the grades, you, you know, look at the full enrollment report so you can see where the class sizes are highest and lowest. So this has an average that looks a little bit deceptive. You have to look at the actual full enrollment report. That's available to the public online as well through the budget page. Again, just some other data on debt service. And finally, um, from fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-three, the year that I came into the district was two thousand and six. Your district has reduced by forty-nine teachers in that time. So sometimes the question comes up, well, have they made an adjustment for the adjustment in enrollment? Yes, this district has forty-nine less F T E teachers than it had in two thousand and six. So it has made an adjustment for enrollment. It's made a reasonable adjustment for enrollment. The other question that comes up is, but isn't your enrollment declining? While there are slight declines from year to year, if you take a look at the enrollment report I provided, the projections and what's coming out is that actually enrollment will start increasing over the next, um, couple of years. And by the end of the decade, you'll actually have more children than you have now. So while you did go in a kind of decline for a while, the district is leveling off and you're headed back up. And so keep in mind that, you know, you're about as, you're, you're in the range within a few kids here or there, under maybe of where you're going to go for your lowest. And then over the next decade, you're climbing again. So take a look at that enrollment data to see, you've made your adjustment. Those forty-nine teachers from those six to twenty-three were the adjustment. So you, you have made that in this town. So there's no adjustment necessarily in this case needed. And you'll see even the reductions we have are impactful. So that's, that's the basic flyover. I think fifteen, twenty minutes I said I would do, so that's about it. But please, you know, let me know what questions you have. What I'd like to point out is that on, um, the Board of Ed dashboard, uh, there is a, a budget question link. So this is the time. Start, you know, throwing those budget questions into that link. Um, and as you, um, start submitting questions, you'll notice that the link right next to it is the answers. So as you submit questions, as we start working on it, I mean, we're not, we can't turn it around over hours sometimes, depending on how deep the question goes. But we post the answer with the supporting material. So you post the questions in one link and click in the other link for the answers. Now that, your answers or the answers that are provided to you are also on the public website. So whatever answer you're given, the public will see the answer that you're given. And the public can send that questions too, but generally just for protocol purposes, we prioritize answering the board's questions first because you're the one who has to make a budget decision by February fourteenth. But as soon as I get through board, um, you know, budget questions from the board, um, you know, public questions, I'll also answer those. And after February fourteenth, once you've adopted your budget, then I focus over to public questions because you need me to give you the priorities so you can make your decision by February fourteenth. So for the public, I'll answer them, but I'll have to do that only after I've gotten yours. And sometimes I'll refer to questions you may have asked that were similar.
Uh, just from procedural standpoint, be, oh, sorry.
Sure. So you finished that?
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm getting this minute, but I just want to make sure, so, you know, to, to footstomp something that Dr. Will had said. You know, we've gotten to that link for the questions. This, I would stress, everybody get in there, absorb this, post your questions there. Don't hold them all to the end. Post them as you're doing, uh, because that gives the staff time to read. Uh, more importantly, if you're asking it, somebody else is asking it too. So as we go through this and we're, we're going to look to each of us to start talking about needs, where we as a board, you don't want to sit, what continues to be funded, where different opportunities. We're going to be asking Dr. Willett to do some, some what-ifs, uh, based on where that budget sits and to answer some of those, those questions. The earlier we can start looking at that, the better we are. The, the more of those questions that you could post, the better he can provide those answers. And then not only us, but the people watching it can be answered. So I want to make sure that, that we get that opportunity and we get to do that. Uh, that being said, again, I'll open it up for some, some questions. I don't want to get too deep into it. So I don't want to spend too much time on it tonight. We'll have plenty of opportunity, but we do have enough to, so.
I just got a quick procedural. Uh, when, uh, you or your staff replies to the question that we submit, do we get some sort of alert or an email? Or just have to check back to see if it's been answered?
Well, during this period of time, typically what happens is you'll flood us with, you know, so I categorize the questions, B Q one, Q two, B Q three, B Q four. You, the way I've done it is you check the, you check the sheet.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I could. It'll just take more time to get everybody.
No, 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 that's fine.
So you'll post a question, I'll add it to the sheet and you'll see them start to propagate.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't too sure if we get like some email back.
But you can definitely, let's say you're not sure something came in, just text me. You know, I, I didn't notice, you know, my question, I'll say, oh, let me make sure that actually got received. And that type of thing, if there's something you think is missing. But it's pretty fast and furious, you know, as you start hitting them and start answering them. And it's mostly my office publishing the answers. Some of them take research and we'll do that soon. You might ask, you know, how, you know, what is the P E budget or the athletics budget? And then I'll show you what we receive paid equipment. Any questions sometimes comes up. But sometimes it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, cut a lot of athletics because athletics in this district is massively funded by the parents. They pay a two hundred dollar paid play fee. So there's not a lot there to reduce because you're already charging parents quite a bit for paid play. So that, you know, that type of thing, you could eliminate an entire ran, an entire school of athletics. You know, it won't give you that much back. So that's why some of that, you might ask that and I will give you the full rundown.
This might be a specific question and I think it's important to know because it has to do with people's lives. On page eight, you talk about, uh, your proposed budget, uh, includes a reduction of nine positions. Are those currently filled positions? And are we talking about eliminating staff that we currently have? Or are those unfilled positions that, that are just going to remain unfilled?
So, um, those are positions that, uh, that have people in them. But for instance, um, if a person is, um, so there was a, a social studies position that, uh, there's a person that we have an L T S in for now. I am eliminating that position. That person isn't there, but that position and the person in it would have been, would have been reduced, right? But because it's in a long-term sub right now, rather than hiring for that position to replace that person, I'm eliminating the position. So there was a person in it who was not with us right now. And I'm going to take that up as the time that, uh, that I can take that position off. And it's not giving that per, you know, there's no human being now losing the job, but it is a reduction in that position.
So we're not talking about Mrs. Smith getting laid off?
Well, in some cases, yes, we are, but not at all. Wherever I could to avoid Mrs. Smith getting laid off, I tried.
Out of these nine positions that you're talking about a reduction of, is Mrs. Smith getting laid off? That she's been here for ten years?
Oh, yes, there is going to be a Mrs. Smith laid off. It's been, that type of scenario. I, I have some detailed information about that, but, um, part of it also has to do with bumping. So, um, in their certification status, um, if you're reducing a position, So, um, in their certification status, um, if you're reducing a position. That, that individual, um, may bump someone else. So for instance, if I'm eliminating a computer education position, uh, the teacher teaching computer education may have a certification in something else. So while computer education is gone and that teacher's position is gone, they may bump a lower tenured teacher. And it, let's say in a different certification class, they have that cert class and that teacher might get bumped out of grade two. So the person who loses the job might not be the computer education teacher. It would be Mrs. Willet in grade two. If they share a cert that's, you know, equivalent and that person has, um, the tenure. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So there definitely are, did you use Mrs. Wilson or something? There's definitely Mrs. Willet's in there, right?
Okay.
There are definitely Mrs. Willet's.
Do you know how many out of those nine actual people?
I can give you a speculative answer right now that, that is fairly accurate at the beginning, like a minute, I can share with us. It would be one of those elevator music situations where there was something. To fill the awkward silence.
Even, even once we get, you know, this answer here. Put that. I mean, that's a good one.
That's a good one to submit so that you can get, um.
And to make sure that, you know, we can all refer to it and the public that looks listening in here.
And I, I just think it's important to know how many real lives we're talking about.
So, and, and, and to the point you're making, I do try to make it as few lives as we're talking about here. Uh, but the thing to keep in mind is even when I do that, that still has an impact on, for instance, world language, okay? If the lowest person on the totem pole is French teacher and that's the only French teacher teaching French at the high school. Then you may lose your French program. But, but, uh, you know, and even if that person, you know, was in a situation where they went on leave or something or left. If, uh, that's an LTS and I get rid of that position, that means no potential French. So it can still have a program impacted and it, even if it doesn't impact a person. So.
Check the wires on that TV in a second.
My, my biggest concern, Dr. Willett, and I know we're waiting on the answer is that, you know, your, your budget says a reduction of nine positions. I think it's important to know how many of those are positions that are easily to go away because they're not filled right now. And how many of them are real life positions? Because if it's, if it's a, if it's only two real people that are losing their job, I think that's a good distinction to know. As opposed to putting it out there that it's nine positions.
And I, and I think what you're, the point you're making is from a human point of view, the human impact on individuals is an important thing to consider. So that's one factor. And then from a board of ed, you know, from your program point of view, um, you have to look at it through that filter too. So, so, um, right now the ELA teacher, there's an LTS. So that one point OELA teacher, there would be, um, that would not be a person, it will be a position. You know, um, social studies, there, you know, there's an LTS. That is filling in for a position that was there, but I just would not fill that again. The world language is an actual person. The science would end up being an actual, um, person, but there may, you know, I'll call qualify this in a minute. Cause you're asking me at a point in time, which is also important for me to clarify. Computer education, actual person, um, sixth grade, there is one, um, potential retirement that could lower that impact. But then the other would be a person. That person may not be directly in that it might bump someone else, but there would be a person. Music is a, you know, would, um, is there, there is a individual who now is retiring. So that would not necessarily be a person. K two, um, there's a retirement there, so that wouldn't necessarily be a person and a para educator is vacant. So the, in doing this, um, quite a few of these would be people that we just weren't fiddling the jobs.
Sounds like three.
Right?
So let's, definitely, we'll take it to that and then let's get deeper into that.
Yeah, but I'll submit the question, so we'll, we'll be able to do that.
Jay, can you add your hand up?
I did. Well, now I have enough, I have a different question now, but. There's one you can ask, can I just add one clarifying sort of scenes for the record? Retirements, right now, you're considering three. If more people retired, it can impact what you're asking as well. So that's one of the things the board can think about, how many you want to consider for your budget proposals.
My new question is how many para educator positions are currently available as of today?
There are about seven, but the thing to keep in mind is if those seven are special education, we cannot not fill them. So they have to be filled one way or the other, which means if we cannot get them filled through a certain job class, we would have to find another job class. Because the special educators usually, the special education positions are connected to IDPs, which are contracts we have that we have to fulfill. So, you know, those seven, we would have to fill one way or the other. And, you know, that's down from a much bigger number.
And then, oh, I'm sorry. My other question from before was, I think you just hit it up. You hit on it very quickly. It was about the sports, the sports programs. I would say the same for the co-curriculums, right? Parent paying, that's a large chunk of them at least. So I just wanted to add that from before to what you mentioned to sports. So that was my only, if it wasn't a question, it's more. Both of those, put them on there so we can let him really flesh out some of that additional information.
We hear this question every time once we go to our town council meeting, so maybe for this level services, but.
No, no, it's not.
Um, and then, uh, I was going to ask the same question that Bill did, but I just wanted to touch on something and I think that this is still high level-ish. TIS music, we currently have a music teacher and a band teacher. If we're not replacing one of them, are we losing a music program or band program?
So that, that's the, that's the bifurcated piece of what I was talking about. So one is protecting human beings, but the others, the impact for instance on that would be you lose your band program at TIS. So you go down to one person and one may be retiring, so two to one. What happens is they can teach general music, but band at the TIS level goes away. So there wouldn't be any instrumental there.
And then although I, I completely agree with you and, and Bill in, um, the human piece of this. I, I do also think that it's not an easy decision to remove it, as I'm also looking at it as. We haven't even dat, do, do, duh. Into, yes. What are, um, what are max class sizes are? And I have a high school student, so I know some of them were pretty high. So this then does mean we're removing a section of language arts, we're removing a section of social studies, we're removing a section.
Program.
Moving a section of science education, which is going to increase class size. And it's also going to make limited opportunities for students to sign up for some of these classes, correct?
Yeah, and, and it does things like it blows up teaming in the middle school for sixth grade.
And destroys. Children who are, you know, could already be struggling in a class with a large class sizes, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm only bringing this up now because again, I will put it on the sheet and I will ask about max class sizes. I, you know, we get average class sizes, but I think max class sizes are important. But we're all going into the, you know, meeting with the administrators. These are the people to ask those kinds of questions to, you know, what is the impact of losing a section of science? What is the impact of losing a section for language? What will be the impact? How many students take band at TIS and what will be that impact? So it just, you know, there, we're going to meet with the experts soon. I don't know the answers to those questions, but aside from the sheet, make sure that you think of those things while you're in front of those people.
And that's the purpose of your January seventeenth activity, is you are in there with them alone. And you rotate through whoever you want to talk to. So you ask them anything you want. They'll give you the very frank answers about, about each of these kinds of things. You'll notice that them, that the heavier reductions are on the six twelve side. Cause K five sizes are. They're just unsustainably, they cannot have any other further reductions in that.
I do just want to point out that again, although I understand the human impact of that and I understand, um, your reasoning behind the curriculum and the team lead positions. Most people here aren't going to be surprised that that's a problem for me. There is a lot more that team leads and curriculum, curriculum liaison do other than just covering meetings. So I do think it's going to be hard for the administrators to step into some of those roles. And I do think we're going to be asking some teachers to take on extra work now that are not with all those positions.
Trust me, we will not allow that. So, you know, again, I go back to, I'd rather feed everyone on the boat a little bit less than throw four or five people off the boat. And that's how I approach that. But I'm not saying that it, I, look, six point nine eight, I gave you that because I had to. I have, you know, and that is a reduction of already a massive amount from the nine point four. And it's the result of a lot of things happening over a series of years. So I, I don't want any of this to happen, but I'm trying to make it as, you know, I'm trying to balance the impacts and minimize that as much as I can. So as a point though, any reduction you make at all will probably have a human impact. We do try to provide, you know, I do try to do it in a space where there's a retirement. So I can, as long as it doesn't compromise the quality of an education program. But there really is not an impact that wouldn't have some impact on the fall. Reduction of that's.
I have a whole bunch, but I'll try to keep it high level. Good night, Lee.
Thank you.
Don't wait to have this out.
So again, I, I have some several questions I'll, I'll populate into the Q and A. But some of the notes that I just took tonight is level services budget nine point five. And that's just level services from last budget. And then I equate that to the last five years and eleven year average, one point seven one to one point six four, which isn't even equating to the cost of living across multiple trades. So I, I think my question is not a question, it's more of a statement. And it's just a shame that we're in the position that we are because we continue to erode it year over year, over year. And now it almost looks like the rhetoric will be as the board of ed is, is going so high and spending so much money when in theory, if we didn't, and I get, and Katie even said today at FFC, they don't look behind, behind us. It's looking forward and how can we impact it going forward? But unfortunately we had one, three, two ninety two, we've had zero, it was point seven four, point eight four, point. I mean, that's, that's less than a quarter increase for an employee at the, the gas station or the liquor store or the grocery store that we're doing for what's shaping our future. So mine is more of a statement and I'm going to dig more into it, Dr. Willett, and write you some stuff. So the level services budget may be nine point five year over year, but it's not level services. By any stretch of the imagination, you'd be going back to two thousand and thirty. So I know that you're in a tough situation, Dr. Willett. It's, 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 this is just a tough, tough pill to swallow. Um, as far as the notes that I took and Bill, I think I appreciate you for asking that question. But when I look at long-term sub, long-term sub, that's still, that's still a person who's educating students in our district. And if we lose that long, that ELA or that long-term sub and it's not replaced, again, ELA is impacted at the high school. Social studies is impacted, but again, it was saying, it ends up being production or what have you, right? The TIS program, that's, that's sad, that's, that's almost like the preschool program again at the high school. So we talk about, I hear Dan in asking great questions about the ad program and this and that. And it just, we're just eroding more programs to have our kids go outs, outs. So I'm just saying, I just, these are, it's more of me reading this and, and, and dissecting it. But again, I have the human aspect of the people, but we also have like the human aspect of the people impact potentially losing a job. The people that are potentially going to take on more responsibilities because of that vacancy. The students, the people that we're impacting that aren't going to get the whole education and opportunity with students year before and the year before. So I think it's a longer conversation than just that. And, uh, I mean, your, your question was right on Bill and it opens up that. So I just wanted to point out those few things. Again, I'll have it in there. And the last thing that I want to say is that we're one forty four out of one sixty six of per pupil expenditure, right? And I know that you put it in there for us to understand it. But that's not something that, that's a biased statement that we're a low budget school to take care of our students. So, um, then you're, you're talking about re, redirecting the sixth grade system that they have. So this is tough. It's tough because it's the human aspect and it's not just our educators and our administrators and our students. And it's, it's the whole thing. Um, last thing I want to say is about the, the class sizes. It says our total is two thousand, two hundred and twenty kids in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. I want to take note that grade nine and grade twelve are one ninety three, one ninety two respectively. But then we've got that bubble coming in. So even though it shows two thousand, two hundred and then it goes down to twenty one eighty nine, that's where people see enrollments declining. But then when you really look down and you see the trends going up, that number is going to flip the script. So you've got the, the fourth grade kids right now are a huge bubble that's going to impact the sixth grade team. You've got the, you know, the seventh grade bubble is going to pass the eighth grade team. Now the eighth grade going into ninth grade, you're going to, you're losing that forty kids, but then you're coming back up. So I just want people to understand the chart because when I first looked at the chart, I saw two thousand, two hundred and twenty and then we're going to twenty one eighty nine. It's declining enrollment. But we got to look at the bubble classrooms and class sizes and coming up. Because seeing over fifteen, sixteen kids in a kindergarten classroom, that's not awesome. That's not good. And then when you have your different teams and you have twenty five kids in a class, that's just tough. So I just, mine's more of statements across the board of things that I've seen through budget processes that I, I really hope that we all dig into. Because this is, this is a tough situation that we're all.
And I also want to just be clear to the much larger. Just to give you a scenario, when I say LTS, let's say I'm, I'm a social study teacher and I decided to retire during the year. I would be filled by an LTS until I could get another person hired. So in these scenarios, when I say I'm eliminating a position, I'm not eliminating just a long-term sub. We're taking, we're instead of replacing that person who retired, we are not placing that, which eliminates something. A section, a program, the band, the TIS, you know, program, that's the kind of thing. So it, it doesn't mean I'm eliminating a long-term sub. It means it's a, it is a position like that music position at TIS, so there's no more band, right? Just so you know, it's not, it's not a sub. I want to be clear.
So, and, and that's, that's part of why. And then Danny, you make a, a good point about some of the data you looked at very, very quickly and you, you see things that flash. And, you know, there, there's a very understandable, but a very emotional response as we look through this. Part of why we don't go too in-depth today is to give you that opportunity to absorb it. But also to reach out and to ask questions and to start looking at Dr. Will and saying, okay, I see this data point here. And I see this data point here, but how are they related? And what happens if I pull on this string versus pulling on that string? Because we have some very difficult conversations coming up. And I want to make sure that we're making those, they're having those conversations and making those decisions based on the story that this represents and not just the graphs and that are.
I just had a really quick question, but, uh, just for those of us who are new to this process. Just when everyone speaks about a level services budget of nine point five, that just means you're maintaining literally everything from last year. Or what does that entail?
Basically, that means we're not making any reduction on any programs of people.
Maintaining last year. Okay, so that's.
Maintaining last year. Same question. Thank you.
Yeah, I did.
Is a abbreviation on just like, uh. I, I have one thing. So right before you, um, and this is page eight. Um, where you say during the budget process, thirty one positions were requested this year. And then you said none of these were positions were added to this proposed budget. During what but during, you're saying budget process, what, what window of time is this, this current from September to now? Is this your budget process and these thirty old positions were requested by like the schools, like principals or who were they requested by?
Yeah, I, I ask what positions do we feel are necessary? And, uh, the admin will, you know, submit, they submit positions they think are necessary. And so I generally, as a matter of courtesy, professional, and will review what they are saying they need or they feel they need for their programs, but I'm not in a position to add those.
This is out of all four of the schools, correct? The thirty one, okay.
And we have four schools, we have six or seven program, you know, so for instance, TTA is another location. So it's, it's not a school that in one of these buildings, it's actually where headliners is. Program there. Leap is a program. So, you know, we have four buildings, but we have like programs in addition to those buildings.
Around town.
Yeah, some are, some are located outside of our buildings like TTA, but some are in our buildings like. You know, Tal, but, um.
What is TTA?
Uh, Tom Transition Academy, it's for the eighteen to twenty two year olds. You know, you're acquired by the state of Connecticut, City of Connecticut law for students. You're acquired by the state of Connecticut, Connecticut Law for students, special education, there's certain, uh, requirements for their IAP PPTs, uh, to keep them through age twenty-two. And so we are generally not, um, usually you do not like have those children be in a school, because they're eighteen to twenty-two. So generally, those kinds of programs are some in a building inside, um, but.
Okay, did it answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Reenia, sorry, your hand up, did you have another question? Any question?
No, I guess I, I thought we weren't gonna go into detail, so it was one trick about that, but no, I don't have anything specific at the moment.
Okay, yeah, just, I'm answering your questions.
Understood, and appreciate it. Uh, so I think everybody, Katie, did you have anything? Okay, all right, uh, that being said, then, we'll go ahead and close this part down. Again, a lot of questions, but are great questions. Over the next series of meetings, you'll see that the overall agenda has less on it, but that's the intent, it's to go deeper into these. That they ask and to have the conversations that, that you brought up, and to debate it back and forth, is, you know, the blessing that we have here is different perspectives. So we'll, we'll come to the conclusion, like I said, from this point forward, we will be creating the Board of Ed budget. We're, we're gonna take the superintendent's proposal, and we're going to own this before we push it to the Capitol, let's do it. Next.
Just one quick thing, so, sorry about that, uh, just the email that went out with this, uh, budget in it, said one ten with disinformation, but there's an error, it says one ten also for the workshop at the high school, but I believe that's on seventeen, correct?
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, because they both said one ten.
And then, you know, and I wanted to, I know Ken kind of touched on it. Um, ask the admin those questions, you know, I know in the last year, we sat with Mr. Stubbe, and asked him, if you got reduced by this percentage, what doesn't get done? What happens if we start doing this, we talk to the, the elementary school, we talk to the tests and the special services? All of the admin there are there to help you understand what the actual effects are gonna be, so that you can make the tough decisions, ask them. Thank you.
Moving on, Dr. Willett, K three ERF requests.
So, um, as you know, we have a fund called the Educational Reserve Fund. It allows you, uh, through a town ordinance, ordinance, chapter eight ordinance, eighty-six, um, basically, you are allowed to put aside up to one percent of your budget at the end of every year if you have some money. So over the span of some years, you've raised some money, about three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, this request is to use fifty thousand of this to offset, uh, otherwise hundred thousand dollar expense of servers that, um, we were notified are no longer going to, uh, receive updates. So, uh, after a certain point in time this year, the servers will no longer be able to be updated, and these servers maintain our security and all of the pieces that we need, um, to make sure that we aren't, um, part of a phishing scam. Or you hear these districts that get, you know, somehow hacked, and then they get all access to the information, and lock out everything, and then you can't, and you have to pay them ransom to get it. You know, so we don't really want to mess with, um, not having the ability to update our servers. Uh, this kind of thing, you know, uh, we did go out and request, but it was not picked up on the capital budget side. So the only whether, way to achieve this chunk would be by coming to, um, you know, either putting it in our operating budget, or have it be, uh, funded through our educational reserve fund. Ed reserve fund can be used for special ed expenses, capital expenses, or technology stuff. So this is a request for fifty thousand to, out of the ERF, um, to bring that balance probably down to about, you know, to seventy-five, seventy-six, um, to use for these servers. The other fifty thousand would be funded in the budget. Now, as a, as a point, a case in point for the budget, if you funded at a hundred thousand, you can reduce next year's budget by fifty. Or so. Because the, the idea was to split this.
For the request here, you're asking for fifty?
Asking for fifty, but if you, if you gave the full hundred out of the ERF, we could reduce, we could reduce the superintendent's budget a bunch right away, but.
Question? Yeah.
No, sir, you can go.
So in your proposed budget, there's a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the IT. Fifty thousand of that is the other half of this hundred thousand.
Portion of that it costs. And, and the one to one from motion.
Okay.
And, yeah. So there, you'll notice that, um, you're, the board will have an opportunity to look at a number of different things like that. There's, um, some communications that I provide that will give you things to think about, but there are things like that. And then on the downside, you're lowering your ERA. So you have a special ed overage at an end of a year, and you want to go to the ERF to balance it out. And, you know, if it's too low, you wouldn't have anything to balance it out with. So you have to, you know, figure out how you want to see that go. But the, this server piece, um, this is a, this potentially is a big deal. We have to, we have to fund this one way or the other, because we cannot not have updates on our servers. You, you can try that, but it would probably be a bad idea.
I'm sorry, what was the first part of your statement?
Brandel.
So, sorry.
David. Oh, well, just as a follow-up, um, is there gonna be any money at the end of this year, which would be one percent that we could put into the ERA?
Because we have such overages in transportation and special edition type of things.
Okay.
Um, you know, normally we have about a hundred thousand or less at the end of a year. With certain exceptions, like the state budget crisis here was an exception, because the state didn't pass its budget, and then we didn't pass one until November, and some spending couldn't happen until February. So there was, um, only a few months to spend and not a lot, there wasn't, there was a chunk at the end of that year, because it was frozen through November and February. The data is a rare anomaly, and there were only two years like that, where we put in hundreds of thousands, the rest of those years are more like fifty thousand, forty thousand, eighteen thousand, twelve thousand, and that type of thing.
But you're not expecting anything this year?
This year, I, I am not expecting much, no, unfortunately.
Yeah. Yeah, no, just really quick, we spoke about it briefly, um, in FFC, but the only thing I'd say is like, if, I think certainly from my personal opinion, we need to do it, the servers, it's thoroughly runs everything, everything, our infrastructure, but, um, as far as funding it, an extra hundred thousand dollars, probably not the best use of the money in the ERA right now, when we're about to talk about potentially utilizing the ERA for other things in our budget process. So like, maybe just hold off a month on it, and then we can talk about further ERA usage, but I would just say spend what you have to spend right now for sure to keep the infrastructure of the school going, but potentially down, we can look at doing that, but there's a lot of things on this budget that fifty grand might be a better use, that could be a teacher right there, so. Essentially looking at next year.
Right.
Oh, I just, I was, I had, part of it got answered already, but this isn't something that we go out and bid, this is something we already have, we're just buying a new model of this server, or that's what I'm not clear on.
It's equipment, it's strictly rack equipment.
Okay.
It's, but it's.
Equipment's at the end of life.
Hardware.
Oh, I understand.
It's hardware, not software. Hardware is the physical.
Yeah, no, I, 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 yeah.
And to be clear, that this request would take fifty out of the ERA, and then the fifty is next year's budget. So we, we take it half and half. It, you know, if you funded a hundred, then you'd have fifty to work with next year, but you'd have to make up for it eventually somewhere. But that's equipment, so that would be a few years out, and you'd have to make up for it.
But I. Jayden, did you, but what's the deadline for the server, or is the deadline set already back, the servers are very?
No, it's twenty twenty-four, I forget what month, but, yeah, I don't wanna.
Or we're into it.
Then, then that's more so. I know, because I, it, when I talk to IT about it, it's, it's within this year, which is soon enough.
Urgent.
Yeah, I, I think it was, I can't remember how many months out, but it's enough for me to knock it. You know, not, it's not a good thing. Um, and, you know, I, I, again, we don't want to play with that, either way, we gotta get these right, we gotta get this finished.
I'll just say I agree with Nina, I think that, you know, I'm not opposed to having a larger conversation about this after, you know, as we go through the budget process for the additional fifty thousand dollars, but we definitely have to tackle, tackle that right now.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion to move this to board action, so. The fact that actually make the motion. Right, any kind of, uh.
Jen.
Jensen.
Okay.
Hearing none on the motion to move this to board action L two. Jayden.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Uh, Jen?
I have an M two, the L two.
Thank you.
Okay.
M two. Dana.
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, Dr. Willett will move this to M two. All right, moving on, new business, we have already done that one, board action, M two. So I will entertain a motion then to.
Look, I had the motion, sorry, you got it up there.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. There's a proposal, at the end of each of these, there'll be a proposed motion for you, should you decide to.
Our motion is to authorize the allocation of fifty thousand dollars to the Talon Public School Educational Reserve Fund for the technology purchase of server equipment for the Talon Public Schools.
Second. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we will go to roll call, Jayden.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Admin. Aye. Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Dr. Willett, motion passed. Right, moving on to public participation. Let's remind, uh, the audience that comments in this section must be limited to those items on the agenda. When you start, please list your name and address for the minutes. I'll keep an eye online, all people in the room, please raise your hand. Dr. Willett, I'm delaying, so you can get the time clock.
Thank you.
Okay.
We get juggling with the right.
No, it's. The clock is up.
All right, that being said, if you are in the room, just let me know, otherwise, uh, online, please raise your hand. All right. And Dr. Willett, it was the clock. Right, uh, moving. Moving on, then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of, you wanted to do that? Go ahead.
I'd like to entertain a motion to, say, go past ten, ten o'clock. Second.
Discussion. Right, hearing none, Jayden.
Aye.
So excited.
We're saying.
Aye. Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Admin. Aye, Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Reenie?
Nah.
Is that a, a Reenie?
Fine.
Excellent, uh, motion passed.